We're going to go ahead and get started if folks could take their seats, please, and wrap up your conversations. And I'm going to go ahead and call this Monday, February 7th, 2022 meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. We're meeting in hybrid mode still, so both in person as well as remotely via WebEx. And Michelle will be running the WebEx portion of the meeting this evening. With that said, we're going to start with our pledge of allegiance. And I see my good friend Lisa Stack in the background, and I'm going to ask Lisa to, please, lead us in the pledge tonight.
(Inaudible) United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, justiciable, and justous for all.
Thank you very much, Lisa. We'll move on to communications from the public. We do have five public hearings scheduled and advertised for this evening, so if you're here to speak on one of the public hearings, please wait until I call that specific hearing to comment. Otherwise, if there's something you would like to bring to the attention of the council, now would be your opportunity. And name and address for the record, please. Former councillor Ryan Hennan's in the house.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Ryan Hennan, 941 Fourth Street, Whitefish, Montana. First-time caller, longtime listener.[174.48][174.48](Laughter). I'm not here to talk about the Big Mountain Development, even though I think it should pass. I'm here because of the amount of people that have shared with me their disgust with the comments made by our own resident billionaire Mark Jones and his intent to withdraw support for, and now I want to get this right, so I'm going to quote him directly from the Flathead Beacon on January 28th of 2022, in which he said, "If the Gateway Project proceeds, we will be withdrawing our support for affordable housing in Whitefish and will not participate financially in any project." Any project. I guess Mark is upset and he's taking his ball and going home. This quote got me to thinking, and I thought, I've seen quotes from this guy before. So I pulled up another article in the Flathead Beacon, this one from June 9th, 2021, only about eight months before this first article, the first one I mentioned. I noticed some of the more quotes from Mr. Jones. First, Mr. Jones said, "It's fine if you want to make a lot of money, but at some point you ask yourself, what is the money for?" Well, I think we have an answer to that question. There's a lot of blah, blah, blah about how he's a regular Joe and this and that. But he settled on buying up a bunch of land, nearly 20% or one-fifth of all the private land in Flathead County, because he wanted, and I'll quote again, "A vacation home from my vacation home." I'll continue on with the original article from June, which now seems like a bad joke, given his promise to pull all the funding if he doesn't get his way. Mr. Jones said, "We've made a little bit of money, but we're still normal people," Mark said. "I don't feel like an out-of-state billionaire. I don't feel like a rich guy from Texas, buying up all the land. I feel like a guy from Lethbridge, Alberta, who took some risks and did well for his family. I feel like a guy who's coming home." Wow. You know, my first son is due to be born any day, and I think about the world, and I think about navigating these times that we all live in, and you're in charge of this little person who has no idea how to act, how to behave, and you get a little bit of time with them to try to lead them down the right path, about how to be a good person, how to treat people, how to be a good neighbor. You know, I look forward very much to meeting my boy and using these statements from Mr. Jones as a cautionary tale, a lesson to be learned. If you don't get your way, that's okay. You live and learn. You don't take your ball and go home. You don't attempt to hold a small community hostage financially. I applaud the mayor in his response to Mr. Jones. I understand you're all not swayed. I understand you're all not afraid. You know, this town was here long before Mr. Jones arrived, and it'll be here long after he takes his money and runs. So I encourage the rest of the citizens of Whitefish to join me in giving him a send-off message: good riddance.
Thanks, Ron. Further public comment tonight, communications from the public.
Nancy Schuber, 110 Bay Point Drive. Nothing to do with the Gateway Project. After listening to comments at planning board and council meetings, the need for affordable housing comes front and foremost in importance. I would like to propose a partial solution to help fund housing. Why not redirect the TPA, Tourism Promotion Assessment, towards housing? This is the optional, a lot of people don't know what this is, still, since 2007. This is the optional 1% at restaurants, car rentals, and lodging. Then we have tourist participation to help fund housing. This 1% equals about a million a year, and it's growing. Perhaps build homes like Habitat for Humanity or start an apprentice program. We no longer need tourism promotion to this extent. Most of our community is happy to pay the 1% if it would go towards housing. The TPA has recently been rebranded by the Convention and Visitor Bureau as the CSF, Community Sustainability Fund. What better way to sustain our community than through housing? Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Hi. My name is Velvet Philip Sullivan. I live at 1637 East Second Street. First off, I'd like to thank you for your service. I know how thankless it can be sometimes. So we're on theoretically the downhill slide of our third wave of a pandemic, of a virus that our species has never seen before. I want to thank you for how you, as a council, have handled it in these trying times, and it's been a tightrope, I know, to walk, balancing the needs of the individual with the well-being of our whole community, especially with what's happened at a state level. I kind of came now, I should have come early, but I didn't want to be out with the virus. But I went, when I was on the council, I went to a League of Cities meeting, and we had a lecture on pandemics and the economic impacts of pandemics. And I just kind of want to remind you guys that some of the things they talked about, they pretty much warned, they pretty much predicted what's happened. They talked about how it was about, I think, the fourth wave, and they used the Spanish Flu as the model. The fourth wave was the worst wave in that it took out, or not took out, but it affected the workers and it impacted supply chains. They didn't use those words, because, but it affected food, caused food shortages. And also at that time, it caused all kinds of problems with workers and, I'd say, the capital captains of industry. And at this time in this area, there was a rise of Trotskyites, my great-grandmother was one, because she felt that workers needed to be provided for and cared for and paid a fair wage and treated humanely. And it rose, the workers revolted, there was unions, and I sort of feel like we're, in some ways, coming to a similar spot. And once again, you have, you're kind of our, what's the word, you're our defense for our community, and housing is an issue, and so I just ask that you, I know we can't, the water's under the bridge right now for this pandemic, potentially, potentially not, and there still may be planning that is necessary to get us through if there is a fourth wave, okay? History may not repeat, but it echoes. And so whether it's this pandemic or the next pandemic, or fires, or other inclement climate stuff, I really ask that you guys keep walking that fine line between individual rights and the well-being of our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Velvet. Who's next? Turner.
Good evening, and I would start out by saying thank you for your service. It's a thankless job. You can't please everybody, and you do the best you can. Twenty years ago, while I was on the Whitefish City Council, the mayor asked if we had anything we wanted to talk about. I said we should talk about a bypass around the city of Whitefish, so logging trucks didn't have to go through the middle of town. Some of you were at that meeting. I was told, "Don't talk about that, because people will be mad." Well, it's 20 years later. I think some people are mad we didn't talk about it, but that's okay. It's just an introduction of what I'm thinking. I don't know, I don't think we could get a bypass now. I think that opportunity is gone. The traffic on Wisconsin Avenue is such that sometimes it can take me 15 minutes to get out of Murdoch Lane and into traffic. It's a safety problem. We're going to have problems. I mean, if this is what it's like now, I hate to think what it's like if we add the number of people that we're talking about in this development.
Turner, if you're here to speak about Mountain Gateway, I need to call that public hearing first, if your comments are specific to Mountain Gateway.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll call that hearing, and then we'd welcome your comments at that time. Thanks, Turner. Further public comment tonight, not related to our public hearings. Not seeing any volunteer board reports from...
John, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
See if somebody online is, would like to. They don't have their hands raised, but...
I don't see any.
We might not have let them know. So if you'd like to, please, if it's, if you'd like to speak towards something that is not on the agenda as a public hearing, please raise your hand. If you are on the phone, please star three on your phone pad or hover your mouse on the participants list, find your name, and there is a hand icon. We'll just give you a short time. Also, once he opens up the public hearing, please, or the public, yeah, the public hearing, that would be the same way to raise your hand. So right now, we do have one person, Amy Johann. Please unmute your mic and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Amy Johannis. My address is 2126 Houston Drive, so right around the corner from this project. I'd like to note that I'm not anti-development, and in fact, I'm in the business myself, but...
With all due respect, I'm going to have to take your comments during our public hearing on this item, if your comments are specific to Mountain Gateway. Are they?
Yes.
Yes, so if you don't mind, that will be Item 6A and 6B of the agenda. We should be there in a few minutes. Thanks very much. Anyone else, Michelle?
No, I don't see anybody.
Okay, we do have a volunteer board report tonight from the Whitefish Community Foundation, a consideration of a request to appoint Kelly Peppemeyer and Terry Peterson as trustees in training to the Board of Trustees, and I welcome Sarah Erickson this evening.
Hi, thank you to the mayor, the city councillors, and all of the city staff. Thank you for putting me to the front of this meeting. I look forward to the rest of it as well.[928.43][928.43](Laughter). I'm here tonight on behalf of the Board of Trustees of the Whitefish Community Library to present our recommendations for our open trustee and training positions. The last few years has shown us just how quickly the board composition changes, as well as the events that we do have to face as that board. So we're looking forward to fill up all of our seats. We're thankful to have had two stellar applicants for these roles, which I have included in tonight's packet, and we are proud to recommend Terry Peterson and Kelly Peppemeyer to join our board as trustees in training.
Thanks, Sarah, very much for the letter, and to that effect, motion, please. Giuseppe.
I move as the volunteer board has proposed.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Councillor Sweeney, further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Thanks very much, Sarah, and your entire board as well. Any further volunteer board reports from the audience?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as I had my first meeting at the Bicycle and Pedestrian Path Advisory Committee, and I think we have the chair, John Phelps, for a report. There he is.
Great. Welcome, John.
I'll be brief. I'm the chairperson of Bike and Pet Committee. We had a meeting today, our monthly meeting, and an issue came up that only you can resolve, but I think it's a quick one. At the November 1 meeting, where we presented things to you about the Riverbend Trail, you adopted a motion involving three things. One was that we would enforce the city's easement with the owners. We would design a trail, and we would apply and obtain FWP approval. Those were the three we pitched to you, and you approved them. We learned at today's meeting that it was a misunderstanding or a different understanding between city staff and the Bike-Pet Committee. The Bike-Pet Committee listed those 1, 2, 3, just because there were three of them, not because we thought we should go in any particular order. The Bike-Pet Committee believes we should be working on all three of those pretty much at the same time. They're all interrelated, and we can't do one without the other, really. City staff came away with the impression that you wanted them dealt with one at a time, and that we'd work on number one, negotiating with the property owners, and when that was completed, we would go to number two, designing a trail. And that's the big disagreement. It's a friendly disagreement. We're all, we all get along well, but the Bike-Pet Committee adopted a motion, asking me to come here tonight, and asking you folks to confirm that we can work on all three of these. We don't have to do them one at a time. I can explain why further, but I don't want to take much of your time.
I guess I'll go ahead and redirect this to Maria or Angie. Is there a reasoning why all three items can't be worked on simultaneously, at least Items 1 and 2? Are we trying to secure easement negotiations before investing funds in design?
So I've actually been working with Ellen McCormick, the attorney for the Homers Association, and we're making progress. I don't think it's going to come down to the fact that we're going to have to sue them or anything. They're not happy with it, but we're, you know, we're making, I think, good progress on the easement. I'll let Angie speak to the rest.
So the direction that I gave to staff was that until we have an easement, we shouldn't be spending taxpayer dollars on a design. Today, I did learn that we might have a community member that would like to work on a conceptual design pro bono. I have no problem with that. We don't have it in the budget to actually pay for a conceptual design or even engineered plans, so again, it comes down to budgeting and making sure that it's a council priority from a financial standpoint. That said, though, I mean, a conceptual design, to work on that, if we do have, you know, it's not going to impact the budget financially, there's no issue there.
Giuseppe, did you have something to add?
I just wanted to say that it's like a chicken and egg discussion, so I understand the position of the staff. At the same time, Angie will need to negotiate something, and it would be good for the legal side to know what parameters they have, and that could come with certain ideas about the conceptual design, and even a little bit of an idea about Whitefish and Wild Park constraints they might have. And that's why we asked for a little bit of direction to the staff to advance the other two points as well a little bit.
Council thoughts? I mean, if we don't have a budget line item appropriated for design, I'm not really certain how we can really move the design forward unless it is pro bono.
We're not, I'm sorry, sorry, John.
Go ahead.
We're not proposing spending any money or hiring any engineers. We're just talking about sitting down with city staff and coming up with the best conceptual design we can that meets the city's needs. And then also, we'd like to talk with Fish Wildlife and Parks and tell them what we've learned about Great Falls and what has been approved there, not apply to them, not try to persuade them, but just inform them. We'd rather do that now than wait two or three years.
Does staff have any issue with that? Maria? Craig? Whoever's going to be reviewing or working on these plans if there's no budget expenditure? I see their point.
Yeah, no, the only struggle that we've had from a staff level is that we don't have a standard easement. It's not like we have a meets and bounds that we can design a path in. We simply have what I'd call an agreement to agree. You know, we have a piece of property somewhere within this 30-foot strip where we can build a six-foot path, and I think the direction that we're going is to build something more significant than a six-foot path. And so we were hoping to have at least some harmony with the HOA before we went forward with that, but I have no problem as long as we're okay, you know, accepting pro bono work for, with somebody who, I will say, has done a lot of pro bono work for the city in the past. So I'm more than comfortable moving forward in that direction if council is.
Maria.
I will say that we probably can't bring, you know, design and the completion of the Fish Wildlife and Parks 124 permit to completion prior to, number one, but there's work behind the scenes that we probably could work on simultaneously while we're working on the first priority.
Are you okay with that, John?
Yes.
Just in concept?
Certainly.
Is that enough clarification?
As long as you folks are...
Council head nods.
On board with it.
Okay with that direction?
Thank you.
Rebecca, quickly.
Is staff saying that the conceptual designs are being done by a professional that you know is a professional? Okay, good.
Yes.
That's all that I would be concerned about.
Thanks, Rebecca. Thanks, John.
Thank you very much.
And thanks, staff. Appreciate the input. Any further volunteer board reports from the council? Not seeing any, we will move on to our consent agenda. You have the special meeting minutes as well as the regular meeting minutes from the January 18th meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I've moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I said...
Seconded by Councillor Quinell, further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign, and that motion carries unanimously, which brings us on to our first public hearing of the evening. Both public hearings from Ordinance 22-02 and 22-03, since they're part and parcel to the Mountain Gateway development, were left open. Similar to the January 18th meeting, we're going to hold, continue one public hearing this evening on both items. Just for the audience's edification, because there was a successful protest on this project, this will require a two-thirds vote of the city council, meaning four of the six members, for an approval of the project, both ordinances, 22-02 as well as 22-03. I would ask that we follow our principles of civil dialogue tonight. Please no clapping, cheering, booing, or I'll have to adjourn the meeting for a short period of time. Please, let's be respectful of both the applicant as well as those commenting from the public this evening. With that said, I'll turn it back to staff if there's anything additional to add to the staff report. Not seeing any, the public hearing is open. As our standard and our courtesy is to always invite the applicant to present additional information that may be new and was not presented at the January 18th meeting at this time, and then we'll go to open public hearing. James? Do you have anything to add? Now would be your time.
Maybe...
Or comments, that's fine. Yep.
Might be the last chance you get to hear me speak. Just a couple of comments on some of the things that have been said. And one thing that comes up a lot, and I guess I'd just begin to say, I feel fortunate that I've been put in this position. I never thought that this was the way this would go, but people will say you've heard from the community. But that got, it bothered me a little bit when I hear that, because the people that mostly benefit from projects like these are always underrepresented, and I just hope you keep that in mind. Most people are busy trying to get through the day with work, their family, worrying about the car payment or their house. The people that always benefit from these affordable projects, a lot of the people I talk to say they don't believe anyone cares what they think anyway. Some people I talk to are nervous to get up and speak because of some of the other folks that might oppose this. The types of people that would live here aren't the kind that can hire lawyers to come and speak for them. This is the same at the national level, state level. It's always the same story. It's always the poor and working class that suffer in these debates. We've also driven a lot of people out of Whitefish that would benefit from this type of project. A couple notes on traffic. This project seems to be the scapegoat for everything, even for conditions that have existed for some time. I read a lot of the comments, and a lot of them are about how long it takes to get down at the end of the day from skiing, but then I think, wouldn't it be nice if some of those people pulled into Mountain Gateway? There's lots of developments that are planned or approved and nothing in the way a community do benefits that this has. But here's a key point, no matter where you build affordable housing in this town, those same people are going to drive up Wisconsin Avenue to go ski. The same people are going to drive up and down that road to build houses and build condos and work there, no matter where they live. So I'm not convinced that Mountain Gateway adds to the traffic problem the way some people would say. Just finally, I'd say again, we're offering a realist solution that can have a major impact on affordable and workforce housing in Whitefish. I haven't heard many other solutions. The Monaghan Road thing is hinted at. I don't know a lot about it, and I'll say right here, I'll volunteer to help with that, to make it happen, volunteer any time or knowledge that I have. But to think that that's a slam dunk, you guys know better. There'll be opposition to that, too. The traffic from that'll be an issue. That's zoned agricultural, have to be rezoned. Again, I support all of that, but that's not the panacea that some people seem to imply. Don't do this, because we'll do that. We should do both. We're making a massive voluntary, unprecedented, generous effort to address housing in Whitefish as well as other community benefits that were identified before we started the project. We saw a letter from Kate McMahon, I'm sure you guys all read that, about the Wisconsin Avenue Corridor Plan, and how she felt like she supported this project. We're asking nothing in return. We're not even coming in at the allowable density without the PUD bonus or affordable bonuses. We're coming in under the densities. The only thing we've asked for is a height variance, which really isn't even a height variance. We're asking to go four stories instead of three, and I'm on record as saying, you can move it down to three stories, I'm fine with that. So really, we're asking nothing in return for eight and a half million dollars of community benefits, not counting 32 D restricted affordable units. That's a ton of value the city receives for free, no strings attached. You don't need to do anything, you don't need to give land away, we're not looking for funding. I said it before, and I'll say it again, there's nothing more that can be done for affordable housing in this location. I'm proud of this project, and I still think it's a good solution, so thank you for your time, and thank you for all the city staff that have helped for the last year and a half to develop this, and I'll stick around in case there's questions.
Thanks, James.
Thank you.
The public hearing is open. I do have a sign-up list, but please don't hesitate to comment if you didn't sign up, and we'll just take anyone as they come in order, please, and your name and address. Yes, sir.
I believe we agreed at the end of last meeting.
You are correct. So to the audience, we're going to hold off and go to the...[1776.11][1776.11](Laughter). Thank you. Turner, you're going to have to wait just a few more minutes. We're going to go with folks that are called in, because we didn't get a chance to get to them at the last meeting, just a few folks, given our time constraints, so we'll go ahead and take folks that are online with us this evening first.
Okay, so just to reiterate how to raise your hand, for those of you who are...
Okay, so just to reiterate how to raise your hand, for those of you who are attending by phone, star three on your phone pad will raise and lower your hand. Star six will unmute your phone. For those of you who are attending online, if you hover over your name in the participants list to the right-hand side, you will see a hand icon. You'll just want to click that. And then when we call upon you, you'll need to unmute your mic. So we're just going to go down the line. And so for right now, David Donaldson, your name doesn't all pop up for me, so I apologize. So at the top of the list, David Donaldson? Donahue?
No.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
This is David Donahue, yeah.
State your name and address, please.
Can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. For the record, my name is David Donahue. I'm a senior hydrogeologist with Hydro Solutions in Helena. My address is 303 Clark Street in Helena, 59601. I have a bachelor's degree in geology and a master's degree in earth science, hydrogeology with over 30 years of experience in the water resources field. I'm also a licensed professional geologist. I previously submitted a memo through Kim Wilson at the October 21 Planning Board Meeting and provided verbal comments outlining my review of water and stormwater information provided in the Mountain Gateway PUD on behalf of the Flathead families for Responsible Growth. I reviewed the minutes from the October 21, November 18 Planning Board meetings and the city council packet and prepared for this meeting. I also attended the January 18th meeting but was unable to testify at that meeting because this meeting, the meeting was continued until today. I have comments specific to water availability and stormwater management to add to my October comments. In general, as stated on page 80 of the staff report, one of the requirements is that preliminary designs for necessary public facilities, infrastructure, and services, including, but not limited to, water, sewer, and stormwater shall be deemed adequate. Although the applicant submitted water, sewer, and stormwater information that was reviewed by the Public Works Department, this information cannot be considered equivalent to a preliminary design. Public Works Department should provide the rationale to support their statement that the information was adequate and provide the analysis completed in review of a preliminary design to support their conclusion so that the public has the opportunity to review what went into the adequate determination. Regarding the physical and legal availability of water for the development, Director Workman stated in the minutes of the November 18 meeting that, quote, "They have gone through preliminary analysis for both water and sanitary sewer for this project, and it has been determined we do have capacity," end of quote. If this is the case, then the analysis used to determine capacity should be provided to the public for review as well. Several comments previously submitted by me regarding the stormwater management have not been addressed. The effectiveness of a stormwater infiltration system depends on soils with an effective infiltration rate and sufficient depth between the bottom of the infiltration gallery and seasonal high groundwater. Prior to approval of this application, this information should have been provided in the staff report in the PUD or in the PUD application for review. As Director Workman stated, Public Works has only seen, quote, "preliminary conceptual stormwater management information at this level," unquote. This indicates that there has been no solid designs and analysis provided by the developer for review on how the stormwater will be effectively managed to meet city standards and regulations. The city engineer standard requires use of the NRCS Type 1 24-hour, 10- and 100-year storm events for sizing stormwater control systems. The current information provided in the application is inadequate to verify that the current retention pond can accommodate and retain such storm event on site. The City of Whitefish Drainage Criterion requires that excessive runoff or developed flow for the 10-year storm event of six-hour duration must be retained on site. Specific plans to meet this criterion to verify that sufficient waters available has not been provided. The new schematic site layout dated January 5th and presented in the council packet displays only one location for stormwater retention, which is located below the west side southern parking lot. The other retention ponds included in the original site layout are no longer present on the new site layout. There were no data or analysis provided to determine if this one retention pond can retain a 10-year storm event on site. This information is needed to evaluate the adequacy of the stormwater management plan. Additionally, as stated in the 2007 Whitefish City Council Growth Policy, onsite retention of stormwater shall be required in all areas without storm sewer and encourage in areas that have storm drainage facilities. Stormwater plan still proposes direct discharge of stormwater from the retention pond into the east shore ditch, which directly contradicts the city requirement to retain stormwater on site. Since the East Lake Shore ditch discharges into Whitefish Lake, control of dissolved nutrients and other contaminants are a significant concern from this development, and a plan to prevent this discharge has not been provided or reviewed. Water quality from runoff cannot degrade the water quality of Whitefish Lake and specifically Moncks Bay, which according to the city's 2018 Wisconsin Avenue Corridor Plan is very sensitive to runoff and land development. So in conclusion, preliminary designs concerning the water capacity and stormwater management have not been submitted or reviewed as required and need to be provided and analyzed by the city to verify the adequacy of this PUD to meet city and state requirements. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, David.
Okay, so Amy Johanes, please state your name and address, please.
My name is Amy Johannes. My address is 2126 Houston Drive. I just wanted to remind everyone tonight how development works. It's build it, lease it, sell it. The economics don't usually work so that these owners will be able to hold it. Investors need to get their money out and construction lenders need to be paid off. So who you're dealing with in the future, and I'm sure James is a great guy, but it's going to be very different than the people before you today, which is why we have to ask the hard questions now. And first, as so many others have said, we need an independent traffic study. A study commissioned by a developer based on a couple of days in 2020 when the border was closed and half of us were too scared of COVID to go anywhere near the mountain. It's just ridiculous. This will be one of the largest projects in the history of Whitefish. Condos and homes are being built all over the mountain, and we have one chance to get this right. I've also heard so much about affordable housing in the past couple of meetings, and everyone is so enamored with this idea of affordable housing. But I'm a little surprised that nobody's asking the really tough questions. These units will be deed restricted, but who is actually going to manage these units? How will they be allocated? Will there be a lottery or waiting list open to anyone who qualifies? How big will they be? Where will they be located in the project? Will they have the same finish level as other units? What's to stop the developers from just doling these units out to their own employer? Anyone who's lived in a major city has seen this happen when affordable housing goes sideways. What's to stop the developer from just keeping these affordable units for employees of the lodge, for example? Need to ask these questions. All affordable units are not created equal, and equal access to these units must be provided. And about the eight acres, is that really a positive change? We're kidding ourselves if anybody thinks it's economically feasible to build 100% affordable housing without huge cash subsidies. Even if the land is free, construction costs are up at least 25% nationwide in multifamily post-COVID. This land will sit empty for years to come, just like the Snow Lot and other sites. Maybe that's not such a bad thing, but let's not kid ourselves this will be affordable housing anytime soon. As I said, this business is build it, lease it, sell it. Abrams is basically a first-time developer with experience in Class B and C apartments in the Carolinas. Their only other development experience is just now getting underway in Kalispell. Don't have a local track record that we can rely on, and we have to ask these tough questions now. Thank you.
Okay, Roy and Esther Loman, please. Unmute your mic and speak your name and address, please.
Hi, everybody. My name is Roy Loman. My wife and Esther and I reside at 2321 Alpine Court, just past the intersection of Big Mountain Road and Wisconsin Avenue. I'd like to add that I'm a multi-generational Montana resident, and admittedly, I hope to preserve what I interpret as Montana values and a Montana way of life. Also, I'd like to thank everybody here for the participation and interest in all that is a concern to us, whether you're a public servant or volunteer, your involvement is really important. And I'm so glad you're all here. Esther and I both oppose Mountain Gateway development. To help in brevity, I'd like to say that both of us very much agree with all the comments that we've heard in opposition. But I wanted to also add a couple of things. We both agree the need for more affordable housing is important. To place this density of housing, however, on this side of the biodeck would mean that those occupying the affordable housing would have to be traveling over the biodeck for much of their needs. If that housing were located on the south side of the biodeck, their travel would be greatly dispersed over many routes. And admittedly, some of that traffic will come to the mountain, but much of it will travel, if it were placed on the south side of the biodeck, much of it would travel to a workplace, to shopping, and other locations that would be of care. I'd also like to comment on potential roundabout that is talked about for the intersection of Big Mountain Road and East Lake Shore Drive, as I understand how it's proposed. A roundabout is a very good solution to increasing traffic flow. And while that would be a very welcome addition in the manner of that intersection, I very much worry about the crossing it would require and its intersection with the bike path that's located there. A roundabout is designed to increase the velocity of the traffic that is using it, and drivers welcome that. And they utilize that velocity hungrily as intentioned. Otherwise, why would you place one in an intersection? As a user of the bike path, I see many types of users crossing the Big Mountain Road. I see many families and groups on rental bikes, and they're not all experienced riders. In fact, often quite different. As an experienced cyclist myself, struggling to get across the traffic flow of an efficient roundabout similar to those on the Kalispell bike path, I find it difficult and I find it frightening to think of that kind of crossing on the experience of a roundabout. I also see multi-generational families, also with multiple dogs, leash to owners. And I hope you all have the vision to see the potential problems with that kind of an interface. Currently, traffic stops at the intersection on the stop sign, which allows bike path traffic to travel more safely and cross that intersection. This creates a situation that works for pedestrians, but it is slower traffic. So we really have to ask ourselves, what is a better solution? Is a pedestrian bridge there a better solution? A tunnel? Is Mountain Gateway up to funding? Infrastructure of that nature? Those are questions that I would like to see be answered before we make decisions about the Mountain Gateway development. So thanks for your time, everybody.
Thanks, Roy.
Okay, Sarah, if you'd like to unmute your mic, state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Sarah Boylan, 188 Moonridge Drive in Whitefish. And I don't have the bandwidth for video, I apologize. In all the talk about fire stations and rotaries, I believe that several more foundational problems have been overshadowed. I'd like to name them here so we can work to address them as a community. Because I believe that this is about so much more than condos. First, let's be clear, the Mountain Gateway project is not the problem. The problem is that people who work here, who serve us, who wait on us, who loan us money, who tend to our students and who run our lifts cannot afford to live here. The very city that they pour their hearts and steamed milk into is inhospitable to them. If the folks, myself included, who run businesses and make our city welcoming to others are not welcome themselves, we have a problem that is so much bigger than traffic. If I had not been able to rent a house back in 2003, I'm not sure that the 300 people who get their mental health needs met through our clinic would have what they need today. People, and not just the ones clever enough to sneak in before we flip that open sign to closed, are what make this city what it is. People who aren't here tonight because they're working. Second, if as a city we are unable to adapt to changing times, unable to shift from a culture we moved here for to the realities we face today, we will be ill-equipped for the moment when the winds of evolution blow apart our rigid, unyielding systems. Hope is not a strategic plan, nor is nostalgia. The people are coming. In fact, they have already arrived, and we can now decide to welcome them as we were all once welcomed here, or we can suffer the consequences of our own myopia, valuing something we're calling character over the very things that actually make good character. If you wish for Whitefish to thrive, you must realize that the path towards greatness is through, not back. And finally, I must address this issue of integrity. Public servants of this community, for whom I am really grateful for your volunteerism, you must not be swayed by the whispers of powerful donors who have grabbed our attention with hefty promises and thinly veiled threats. For if you do so, you will demonstrate that it is not solutions you seek, but rather donors to please. The issues surrounding the intersection of Wisconsin Avenue and Big Mountain Road is about so much more than some condos and townhouses. Sadly, it's become a matter of equity or not, a reflection of our ability to adapt or not, and a demonstration of our integrity or not. Friends, neighbors, baristas, fellow business owners, good people of Whitefish, let us not be the sort of community whose character is built on inequity and elitism. Let's instead be the sort of community who sees a problem, finds a solution, and moves toward with grace. Please approve, and let's get back to business. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Okay, Carl Moody, if you'd like to unmute your mic and state your name and address, please.
Okay, thank you. My name is Carl Moody. I live at 566 Elk Highlands Drive. I appreciate this opportunity to express my opposition to the Mountain Gateway PUD. And I would like to thank the three members of the planning committee who voted against this project for actually listening to our concerns and for acknowledging the overwhelming opposition to it. It was disappointing to learn that the only vote for it came from an elected official, and I hope he's listening to our concerns. I am one of the 3,850 people, let me repeat that, 3,850 people who signed the petition opposing this project. Our area's infrastructure is already overstressed. Traffic's worse than it's ever been, and you'd be adding fuel to the fire by approving a massive density increase at the worst traffic spot on Lakeshore Drive. This area is already experiencing a COVID-induced acceleration of development, which would otherwise have occurred over the next five years. We'll be living with the ramifications of this acceleration for a long time. Now, the developer's proposed traffic solution is a roundabout. To quote one of my favorite tennis players, John McEnroe, "You can't be serious." An increase to the existing zoning numbers in this area without a four-lane road would be negligent, particularly after approval of the high-density quarry development. In my email to the planning board and many others opposing this PUD, cite the Whitefish Growth Policy Statement. And I actually went in and read the statement for the first time and frankly thought it was very well thought out and an appropriate guide to development in this area. Some of my favorite sites in that, on page 53, residents wanted the rural lands that surround the city to remain open and free of intense development. Page 54, residents expressed a strong dislike for higher-density housing that would overburden existing services and facilities and would not be compatible with existing neighborhoods. Page 63, visioning session participants were most clear in expressing a dislike for relatively high-density housing they felt is not Whitefish. Now, I could go on, but I think you get the gist. But I do have some questions for you all to consider regarding this policy. Does the city council believe the growth policy statement is still operative? At least three members of the planning board apparently do. While it was approved many years ago, I haven't seen a superseding document. That policy was derived with significant public input. So before it's just set aside, shouldn't we have an opportunity to update that input before you just completely discard it as a yes vote would do? I think the nearly 4,000 people opposing this PUD are affirming this growth policy. Now, it seems to me the main justification for those in favor of this PUD relates to affordable housing units, and I heard that a little earlier in this talk. Now, the additional allocation of acreage for such units after the planning board vote demonstrates what a charade the original proposal was. While their addition of affordable housing units is clearly an improvement on the original proposal, it's still insufficient to offset the massive disruption that will occur from this unjustifiable zoning density from this unjustifiable zoning density increase. Now, as evidence of this, I think you just have to look at the mountains' position on this project. Now, I don't speak for the mountain, but they are on record as being opposed to this project. Now, have you ever seen the mountain oppose any development that might afford them additional business? I haven't. And as one of the largest employers, folks who need affordable housing, they understand that even this enhanced affordable housing offer still isn't sufficient to compensate for the other negative impacts and problems it will create. The proposed number of affordable housing units is just not a valid justification for approval of this project. Now, in closing, it's apparent to me that the people have spoken. We don't want this PUD. We don't need it. So the real question will be is, are you guys listening? Are you more concerned about a few developers' bank accounts than the concerns of the people who have to live with this mess on a daily basis? I hope you put an end to this nonsense, follow the planning committee's recommendations, and vote no. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
Eric Cantor, please unmute your mic and state your name and address, please.
Hello. My name is Eric Cantor. I live at 1489 Second Street. Hi, citizens and council members of Whitefish. I'm a proud resident of the Whitefish community for around 16 years. For the better part of that time, I moved up to Whitefish with the intention of snowboarding hard in the day and working harder in the restaurant industry at night to afford the lifestyle I desired. Over the past 16 years, I've been able to make that dream a reality. I'm a proud parent and a homeowner in a community that really allows me to enjoy the outdoors in an amazing environment. I own a home only for the sole fact because of the Whitefish Housing Authority. The Whitefish Housing Authority allowed me to own a home in a community I love so much when I otherwise would have been priced out. Like I say, I'm a bartender, and it's just hard to own a house in this type of area. I try to repay that as much as possible by volunteering at certain organizations and donating as much of my money as my bank account will allow, which isn't a ton, but I still do it, and I volunteer as much as my time will allow. With that being said, I'd like to take in the fact of charitable donations. Charitable donations are meant to be just that, donations. I'm really against donations when they are used to be used as influence and leverage. To me, that would be lobbying and not a donation. Donation is meant to be no strings attached. The fact that people are trying to leverage donations to influence something makes you a lobbyist. I've heard many arguments against the mountain gateway projects. But it seems the arguments I keep hearing are the same ones that they keep addressing. They seem to be addressing fire and traffic. This project and the developer have proposed solutions to fire and traffic. They are donating land to develop a fire station, which will help with the fire evacuation. They are going to privately fund a roundabout, which to me is the only solution I've heard to the traffic that is currently a problem and will continue to be a problem ongoing to the mountain road. I sit in traffic every day. I drive up to the road. Most of the day, the mountain is open. I don't want to sit in traffic any longer than anyone else. But you know what? There are solutions, and I'm willing to sacrifice a little bit of my time if it means more affordable housing. The bottom line is, this land is going to be developed no matter what. The issue is, is will the developer of this land be a part of the solution or the problem? This developer seems to actively be a part of the solution. Donating land for a fire station and making a huge contribution to affordable housing in Whitefish with people like me that are low-income, blue-collar workers can benefit from seems to be a win-win for the community. These people that are going to occupy these things are already a part of our community. They are not adding to the traffic problem. People are going to drive up to the mountain regardless of if they live at the base of the mountain or if they live over the viaduct. The viaduct is its own separate problem. It does not need to be brought into this thing. I'm I'm here to say that everyone deserves to live and be a part of the Whitefish community. Everyone deserves to be an active member of the community. You shouldn't have to have an extreme amount of money to enjoy this special place in which we all call home. Montana is built on the backbone of blue-collar workers and community-minded folks who help each other out in times of need. Now is not the time to pull away from that. I believe now is the time to lean in to times of need. Sometimes leaning into this times of need requires a bit of sacrifice and risk. I, myself, am willing to sacrifice a few extra minutes of my day after doing one of my favorite activities, snowboarding, if it means many more individuals will be able to enjoy this opportunity. Even though I believe that solutions to traffic like the roundabout will work, I'm willing to sacrifice the risk if it does not. To me, skiing and snowboarding is a way of chasing fleeting moments. I personally not see a huge downfall of spending a few extra minutes in traffic reflecting upon these awesome fleeting moments, listening to my favorite music in my car, if it means that people still have an opportunity to afford a house in a beautiful community of Whitefish. All I ask is, people really consider that people like me need programs like this? And places like this to own a house at the base of a mountain are very rare and few and far between. This does not mean that the development by Monakin shouldn't exist or be also pursued. They don't have to be mutually exclusive. We can develop multiple affordable housing sites, and they all can be done responsibly. And it sounds like this developer really wants it to be done responsibly. He sounds like a guy who grew up blue-collar, working for a service, and knows what's going on. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay, next down on the list, the phone number that ends with 38. If you go ahead and please unmute your mic and state your name and address, please. *6 to unmute your mic. I've unmuted your mic. So you can go ahead and state your name and address, please.
I think he is speaking, but the volume's down.
Your volume, we're not able to hear you. Can you increase your volume, please? Okay, I think we're going to move on to the next, and we'll come back to you. Lisa Jones, if you'd like to unmute your mic and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Lisa Jones. I reside at 314 Blanchard Hollow in Whitefish. My husband and I also own three properties in the Whitefish city limits. I'm a former Donut resident and now considered in the county. I've been watching this development and the public process unfold for this period of time. We've all been through through the planning board and now the city council, the long city council meeting that we had in January. And there have been a few things that have motivated me to speak tonight. I am always concerned about traffic. I'm also a skier. I'm a user. I'm always concerned about development. I'm concerned, the meetings that I came to prior, talking about the bleed and the pirates showing up here and buying things sight unseen and and going for the lucrative short-term rental and all those things. And so I'm always trying to pay attention to that stuff and 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 comment on that stuff. But when I saw this one go through the planning board and then I saw it then come back and change based on all this public input that was given, that was one thing that definitely caught my attention. But the one thing that really got me to speak tonight is the wealthy new resident that wants to use his wealth to threaten our civic process. And that is just not how our community works, and it's not how our community is going to be successful and have everyone counted as in a public process. It is also for me very frustrating to hear the opponents set the narrative of misinformation at a time when we are at an all-time high of misinformation in our society. This is just another one that people will say, oh, it's going to be VRBOs. We don't want those. That's not true. It's going to be second homeowners only. It's more of the bleed. That's not true. It's apartments. It's apartments that rent. There are a few townhouses. There's most, there's over 300 apartments. That is the basis of this development. And when I started thinking about that and when I watched the young people in our community testify at the last city council meeting who have no place to live, I thought to myself, at least this will help some of the bleed that's going on where there is no inventory for people to live. So anybody that wants to rent an apartment or a house, the lucky ones like us that got in can ask any price they want right now. And so we need places for people to live. We need, my family has moved here. They're a teacher and a nurse. They don't have a place to live. We're lucky because we had a place for them to live. And so these are the types of people that will live in these apartments. And so I agree with what other people have said tonight, what Eric said about people, that we're all going to come up the big mountain. We're all going to come back. If people can live at the base and take the public transportation up there, if they can be the supply of some of the industry jobs that are needed up on the mountain and take the bus up there, that's actually going to cut down on some of this traffic that we have. I am, I I used to be able to make it from the top of the mountain to my desk in 17 minutes. I can't do that anymore. I have to take an hour to do that. I don't want more traffic, but I do want a community where people can live, the people that work here can live. And this development is not about the typical condos where people are going to come in and buy them and have them as their second homes. These are apartments that are going to be rented to regular people, and 30-year-something or whatever it is are going to be deed restricted, and then we get $8 million in affordable housing? I mean, in a crisis time like we have now, I'm probably not making any friends tonight, but I really have to say that I need to support this project. And I am really disappointed in the NIMBY, the NIMBY perspective that we have here. It's like, we all want one thing until it's in our backyard, and then we don't want it anymore. And yeah, I don't want traffic either, but I do want people to live here. And so I thank you for your service and for listening. I know this is a very difficult one to be working on, and I appreciate all of your time and efforts that go for it, and thank you for the ability to speak tonight.
Thanks, Lisa.
Okay, we're going to go back to the person that was on the phone, if you'd like to unmute your mic. Actually, I've unmuted your mic, if you'd like to state your name and address, please. I hear music in the background. Okay, we're going to move on just because of the lengthy meeting that we have tonight. Steve Ryder, if you'd like to unmute your mic and state your name and address, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, my name is Steve Ryder, and actually, I'm 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 speaking on behalf of my wife, Kristen, who's traveling, but she wanted me to read her statement here for for the council's consideration. First of all, I, Kristen Ryder, want to thank everyone who has been involved in the planning and oversight of this special City of Whitefish project. We are only one of, we are one of only four lake and ski communities in the West. Your volunteer hours to oversee the orderly and proper growth of this city does not go without gratitude. First off, I support orderly growth and property rights, and like most people here, I'm also sad to see wild spaces developed. I accept the reality of growth over my personal feelings, and I am concerned that recent modifications are being or will be made to this project that should warrant that the project should go back to the planning board for additional analysis. I ask that you do not approve the construction based solely on the need for affordable housing without further study of the proposed PUD in its final form. I ask that you do not hastily approve the annexation, zone changes, and variances without full and comprehensive understanding of the full impacts of this mixed-use satellite core upon our roads, full-time residents, businesses, and environment. We all understand that the challenges of our housing imbalances are significant, but I do not feel adding 270 units to get the affordable units the city needs is a justified trade-off. I prefer that the city support the other proposed and better-located projects. Affordable projects centrally located in our core, near to the schools, parks, and retail and emergency services, and with a minimum of 100 units and at densities of 18 per acre, are not only more efficient, but they are suitable for institutional management and capitalization. I feel that the class war is being waged over this project is unfortunate and distracts the city council's objectives of addressing the impacts and concerns being raised. Notably, there is a petition of 3,800-plus people opposing the Gateway Project. This is not everyone who opposes this project. I know there are many people who voted for this council who have not spoken of their serious concerns in petition to you. They are all viable concerns, and they should be addressed before they vote. Most notably, the traffic stays are woefully insufficient. In simple math, by industry standard, each residential unit generates between eight to 10 car trips per day, trips to and from work, stores, school, entertainment, deliveries, and services. This project's traffic impact will potentially add an additional 3,400 trips per day. We live on off of Wisconsin Avenue. We recognize this would be personal to us. That notwithstanding, this traffic study did not address the impact of two crosswalks on Big Mountain that will cause intermittent stops as pedestrians cross to and from the snow bus and retail areas. The city staff noted that the project is contingent on the roundabout being approved by the state. This critical answer should be received before anyone wastes more time. The pedestrian and bike impact should be included in the updated roundabout design and study. The impact of emergency medical services traveling to and from areas off of Wisconsin should be revisited after updated traffic studies are completed with current design densities and projected densities for the new potential use of the eight acres as they are submitted and as part of the approval in a study. These traffic answers should not, should be known before the approval of this project, not after. The impact on Whitefish of a project such as this is not fully rectified by the proposals made. In exchange for water and sewer services, annexation, variances, and rezoning, the city will have an acre and a half for a fire station, which we might add will cost over $5 million to construct. But this will divert needed resources and funding from larger, better-located projects. The negative impacts voiced by your community are lengthy at this time. Daily impacts to students, residents, skiers, service vehicles, emergency vehicles are proposed to be significant. The council has the choice to approve whether or not an annexation is an appropriate benefit to our city. The same goes for rezoning and density and height variances. In the future, any project of this size should no longer be approved without a greater contribution to our community in the way of park improvements, roadway improvements, improvements to our schools, funding police and fire, either in the form of in-lu dedications or by the direct payment of impact fees that reflect their fair share of added costs to our infrastructure and services. The council always has the right, the last right, to approve any project on these lots, and any threat of more density, if we do not approve, this particular project is a deception. I ask you to seriously consider if this is the project, a residential project split by a busy road that has grown in congestion, and that this is the location for this project. You have the authority to say if it, as designed, adds to our special community or the negatives outweigh the positive at this time. Thank you for your time and consideration, Kristen Ryder.
Thanks, Steve.
Kay Ren, if you'd like to unmute your mic and state your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Lauren Walker, and I live at 155 Foner Road. My name is Lauren Walker, and I live at one five-five Slaughter Road. And I was gonna come down there live tonight and speak, but honestly, I was feeling pretty despondent that my words or anything that I had to say would sway anyone in any direction. And that didn't feel good in a participatory democracy, so I thought I'd speak anyway. I think it's unfortunate that this developer has used the, one of the most divisive issues in this town, which is affordable housing, as a cudgel, and split this town in the middle in the hopes of getting their process passed. I think it's disingenuous because part of the development group has had many, 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 I can think of six off the top of my head, opportunities in which to include affordable housing in their developments, and chose again, and again, and again, and again, six times, not to include any affordable housing in any of their build-outs. So I think that they are using this as a divisive issue. A few people have brought up today the Joneses and some of the other wealthy donors in this town, essentially saying that they would withhold further donations, and saying that as lobbying or coming dangerously close to bribery. But I would suggest that what the developers are doing is quite the same thing on the other side. How are they any different than using their, this, again, divisive issue to leverage their cause? They are lobbying to get this massive inappropriate structures built in this place by dangling what they think this town needs right here. One of the things that the man spoke of at the last meeting was in ten years on, what will happen in this location if they don't get approved and don't, and aren't able to develop? And he basically said, in ten years, the problems will be worse, the traffic will be horrible, and we still won't have any affordable housing. Well, to me, that is a pretty pessimistic, negative outsider point of view, almost a carpetbagger point of view, saying that we must do what he says as our answer to a problem, and that if we don't do that in ten years, we're gonna go down the tubes. But there's way many other beautiful possibilities for what could happen in ten years' time. For example, maybe we use that next ten years to increase and improve our infrastructure, which is horribly outdated and doesn't really even support what's already here, let alone what we know is coming and is already in process of coming here. So why don't we spend the next ten years doing that? Creating affordable, eco-friendly housing in appropriate locations with neighborhood integrity in place? Why make what's already bad worse with, again, this idea that it is inevitable? Nothing is inevitable until it absolutely happens. One of the reasons that I wasn't gonna speak tonight is because I've come up, and you guys know me at city council, I've come up many times to talk about issues that I think is important to the growth of this town. The last time I came up was to oppose the massive temple to Big Oil that is now at the gateway to our town. And what I was told was that, well, if we take it into the town and we approve it, then we'll have, we meaning the town, we'll have the ability to have some say in what develops there, and we'll have some oversight on that. Well, that oversight has now led to them cutting down all the big trees, which, again, they said they weren't gonna do, they promised they weren't gonna do, they swore up and down they weren't gonna do, but if you drive by now, they're gone. So I don't have a whole lot of trust in these out-of-town developers that come in, they're squeezing the juice out of our town and taking the money someplace else, and they're giving us these little dregs and causing all of this infighting in the town by bringing up these issues that are incredibly important. Yes, we absolutely need workforce housing, and we need to put it in the right place at the right time, and we need to do it, how about nonprofit, so that we are not extracting massive wealth from this town, but we are actually giving back. So I really exhort you, the council, you have an incredibly difficult time in front of you right now. Either way, you are gonna have lawsuits all up and down. So you only have the choice to make the right decision and stand by integrity and morality and the ethics of all of these decisions in front of you right now. I please pray for you to not approve this subdivision at this time. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. In the spirit of trying to give everyone an opportunity to speak this evening, we have taken hours of public comment between the planning board and the council. We have thousands of pages of public comments, so if you, out of respect, please be concise, and if you agree with the previous speaker, you can just state, I agree with all the points stated previously. We have your written comments, and they're read into the public record formally. So if you did submit written comments, please don't take the time to read those in front of us this evening. Please try to consolidate your comments. With that said, Michelle, who's next?
Catherine Holly, Holly, would you like to, could you please unmute your mic and speak your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Catherine Holly at two four four eight Big Mountain Road. I do agree with the prior comments for numerous reasons for concern against this development. Primarily, my concern that I'd like to speak of today is, relates to professional concerns. I'm an anesthesiologist. I work at Logan Health in Whitefish and in Kalispel. And currently, even prior to adding many, many, many people at the base of the hill, there are many days that a medical emergency would, could take a long time to get to the hospital. And I really, I really worry that adding so many homes, so many people. I mean, when, with you thinking of a heart attack or a stroke, you know, they always say, you know, time is muscle, time is brain cells, and it really is true. And I, I really am concerned that medical emergencies will have more difficulty getting to the hospitals. We have one way into town from the side of the, from the side of the viaduct, and adding a lot of congestion all at once. It, it concerns me as a physician. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
Brian Shot, if you'd like to unmute your mic and state your name and address, please.
Brian Shot, seven oh eight Loveford Avenue. No. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. That's the definition of concise.
Okay, we're gonna try the phone number one more time, and then we'll close the, move to the in-person comments. If you have your phone number ending at three eight, please unmute your mic and state your name and address. State your name and, oh. Your mic is unmuted, can you state your name and address, please? Mayor, we have two others that just popped on, do you want me to go and take those? Mary Flowers, please unmute your mic and state your name and address, please.
Hi, it's Mary Flowers, speaking on behalf of Citizens for a Better Flathead. Our office is in Kalispel at thirty-five Main Street. I wanted to, uh, begin my comments by saying that respectfully to the mayor that the intent of a public hearing is for the public to be able to hear each other, and while I respect your request for brief comments, I think it's very valuable for the community to be able to hear each other speak. Having said that, I wanted to add another comment, which was not part of our written comments, and that is, as someone who looks at development occurring in the county as well as in the city, there has been a steady stream of zone changes and downzoning on properties surrounding the city. The idea that this Big Mountain property is the only property that is available to be developed to meet housing needs in Whitefish is sorely inadequate, inaccurate, excuse me. Additionally, tonight on your agenda, you have a proposed zone for the highway corridor just south of Highway ninety-three South Quarter. And unfortunately, that proposed zoning gives much more emphasis to development of commercial and business uses as opposed to housing. And this is an opportunity, again, where at the entrance to the city.
Mary, Mary, please speak to the Mountain Gateway and not the other agenda item, please, we're not in that public hearing now.
It's related to this in the sense that there are, my point is, is that there are numerous other properties, and no inventory has been done of those, which should be done as part of this hearing, to look at other opportunities where affordable housing is possible. Having said that, I wanna also speak to the fact that we respect the concern that have been raised about the proposed Mountain Gateway Project by numerous donors who have donated to many valuable community projects within the cities, and to those who have identified affordable housing as a need, we need to come together to find better solutions for the Mountain Gate, other than the Mountain Gateway Project. We also fully respect the fact that it's elected officials, the state prohibits you to consider a promise or allows of any donation to influence your decision on the Mountain Gateway Development. To do so would be to be influenced by form of bribery, which state law clearly prohibits. What cannot be ignored, however, that when the city with good intention bring the legacy home program to allow for voluntary donations of affordable housing in exchange for other development rights, and did this after the legislature declared a mandatory program illegal, is that, is how this voluntary program of donating affordable housing is now being used, as in the case of the Mountain Gateway Development, in a questionable manner. From a growing public's perspective, the voluntary donation of affordable units is morphing into a de facto broad type of how many units must a developer donate to secure city approval despite the numerous other problems with the development. It is established in the hearing record that seeing more units of affordable housing donate, donated would influence at least one councillor's vote. And now that a significant number of additional affordable units have been added through the donation of apparently eight point eight acres of land, we urge the city to take a hard look at how it weighs criteria it must consider in approval or denial of this PUD and its associated zone, zone change request, and the findings you make in reaching your decision. We think it is fair to say that state law that governs the approval of a PUD and zone changes do not allow for the donation of affordable housing accompanying an application, resoning application to override your fair and well-reasoned review of the PUD for compliance with the city's own growth policy and the criteria found in MC seventy-six-two-three-zero-four, which includes requirements to secure safety and fire and other dangers, promote public health and public safety and general welfare, and facilitate adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, et cetera. Of additional concern with the proposed Mountain Gateway Development are the following. While the ordinance stated proposed for approval of Mountain Gateway Development makes conditional approval, makes a condition of approval, the inclusion of thirty-two affordable housing units offered by the developer. The proposed ordinance as of January eighteenth has been amended to include a condition that eight point eight acres of land will also be dedicated. However, the Mountain Gateway applicant made clear that this land will only be offered if their application is approved, that they have met with the city for other assurances, and this is quote from their, basically requoting their application materials, for assurances regarding their donation, donating this land, which appears to take this offer out of the category of a voluntary community benefit, and now raises the question, should the city consider as to this donation of eight point eight acres for affordable housing and the conditions under which it is offered, now raise a kind of interest which is improper? In addition, additional condition on this eight point eight acres appears in condition fifteen X of the conditions of approval, which appears to, to make an additional condition that the approval of this eight point eight acres will be subject to the overview of the zoning administrator or planning director, which implies that consideration of how this eight point eight acres develops will here going forward be out of the public review and out of the council's hands. And we feel this is, again, an inappropriate condition that is being placed in these eight point eight acres. Again, we would like to emphasize that the Whitefish PUD regulations, we believe, are being illegally applied here, we believe, to insert unlimited multifamily housing into underlying zoning districts that do not even allow multifamily housing or the scale of housing. And we refer you to the legal arguments that have, and have been presented in the November ninth, two thousand twenty-one letter from the attorneys representing Flathead for Responsible Growth. We also suggest that you go back to the hearing record of the adoption of the two thousand eighteen PUD revised regulations to see our longstanding opposition, and the issues we raised about the inappropriate insertion of multifamily housing into zoning districts that were not zoned for that use. The public should know that PUD regulations allowing extremely high multifamily housing proposed in the Mountain Gateway Development was written by the Whitefish Planning Director and approved by the Whitefish City Council, disobeys strong, strong public opposition, including our own. The PUD regulations are not state law, it is a written policy and adopted by the city. It is not a zoning policy of Whitefish that reflects how the public wants Whitefish to grow. It is a city policy that can and should be changed, and residents should not have to go to court to have it declared illegal. It is not changed that Whitefish can expect to see, if not changed, Whitefish can expect to see many more Mountain Gateways scale developments.
Mary, with all due, with all due respect, Mary, with all due respect, we're running past nine minutes with your comments, we have all your written comments entered into the public record, and we have about thirty individuals waiting here in council chambers tonight that would like to speak to this issue, and at this pace, we'd be here another three hundred minutes. So I would just ask you to try to wrap it up here in the next minute, please.
I will try to wrap it up, thank you. On annexation, the record is absent the required petition for annexation, and again, it's not clear why the planning staff, when asked about this, continues to withhold it from the public record. The public needs to be able to see this, and it needs to be part of the hearing record. And again, annexation is not something that is misstated as being something that you have to annex at the county level of approval of the zoning. Again, I would ask that you, before you move forward, identify ownership of this Mountain Gateway Development. The PUD regulations, again, require that a letter with the authorization, and this is on page nine sixty-five of your packet, be included, and it's not in the book, and so we don't have. And so we don't have that authorization that is signed by all owners of the property. It was confusing at the last public hearing when James Barnett made the statement that since he's now owner of the property, he should make a statement that he was making. I'm not clear if he is now owner, sole owner. But I would like to see that clarified for the public record. And the required documentation of your own regulations be made part of this hearing record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate your comments tonight. Michelle?
Okay, down the list, the phone number that ends with eight-nine starts with four oh six eight and then eight-nine, please unmute your mic and state your name and address.
Yes, hi, my name's Erin Flaherty. I live at ten sixty Creekwood Drive in Whitefish. I'm just coming to speak before council and everyone present tonight. Just as an emergency services provider, like Dr. Holly, I'm an anesthesiologist and provide on-call services to emergencies such as acute coronary syndrome, brain bleeds, as well as pregnant women who are in distress and need to imminently deliver. Our motto as anesthesiologists is when seconds count. I have gone on record now over the past four years speaking on specific concerns I have with Whitefish's traffic grid. This has not gotten better, it's only gotten worse. When I'm on call, there are certain places I can't even go in town anymore because I don't know if I will make it within my twenty-minute call window to the hospital. Please keep in mind your loved ones. And if they happen to have a heart attack or a brain bleed, fell over from a cardiac arrest during a ischemo event, that these things do happen. There's time to transport patients and then time to activate the emergency services and providers needed to provide care for our community. I ask city council with regards to this project as well as any moving forward, please focus on our infrastructure and keep our community safe. And please provide acceptable solutions for traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Okay. Next on the list is Christina Treeweiler Schmidt. Please unmute your mic and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Christina Schmidt, one seventy-three Hastings Trail. I'll be quick, and I'm very thankful for all of your time. I just wanted to say that I was headed down Wisconsin Avenue on Saturday around four fifteen when an ambulance with emergency lights came on at the north end of Wisconsin Avenue, coming from what I assumed was the mountain. And as I was scrambling to pull into a driveway, since there was no shoulder of the road due to snow buildup, my eight and twelve-year-old daughter started saying, Mom, why aren't these, why isn't anyone pulling over for the ambulance? Why isn't anyone pulling over for the ambulance? And I looked up to see that sure enough, no one was pulling over for the ambulance because no one had anywhere to go. Slowly but surely, cars were able to pull into parking lots and the ambulance very slowly made its way into town. And at the time, I just thought to myself, if I had a loved one who didn't make it to the emergency services they needed in time, when because even way, I would absolutely lose my mind. And I am all for affordable housing. But I don't think anyone should have to give up reasonable access to life-saving services to be able to have affordable housing. I understand that there are other areas where this could be done. I live in the Monigan Road neighborhood. And I would much rather see increased affordable housing in my own neighborhood where people also are granted access to services they need, potentially life-saving services. Thank you.
Thanks, Christina.
I think that was the last one, John.
Thanks for your patience. Who would like to speak first? And just as a reminder, Turner, you're, you got third time's a charm, Turner. Thank you. Name and address for the record, please, even though I know where you live and who you are.
My name is Turner Askew. I live at Three Ridge Crest Court in the Suncrest subdivision. We access Wisconsin Avenue through Murdoch Lane. So I'm very familiar with trying to get out on the, uh, Wisconsin. I'll pick up where I stopped. The traffic on Wisconsin Avenue is such that it sometimes can take fifteen minutes to get off of Murdoch Lane and into traffic on Wisconsin Avenue. This is a traffic safety problem that will not solve itself. It is a problem that is going to get worse unless we do something about it. I bring this up because we need to talk about a second exit off of Big Mountain while it still would be possible. The people that are so concerned about a, the people that were so concerned about a bypass then were the heart of Whitefish and downtown business group. And I'm sure someone's going to get upset with me for bringing this up. I don't think people would use the second exit if they wanted to go into Whitefish shop. They just want to go home. The present proposal before you does nothing to solve the problem, but will add to the problem to the point where you may not be able to solve it. I think it would be prudent to not grant approval to this huge addition of dwellings until after you come up with a plan to mitigate the traffic problems and give us a second exit to Big Mountain Ski Resort and Housing Area. I think that the Big Mountain Housing Area is going to be your problem in another couple of years. So while you, it's not part of the city right now, it will be. This would help our, solve our traffic problem, give them a second exit in the event of a fire. We remember the fires in California last summer. And this could be our problem. Respectfully submitted. Thank you.
Thanks, Turner. Who's next? Please just help yourselves to the podium.
I'm Velvet Philip Sullivan, sixteen thirty-seven East Second Street, Whitefish. As I said before, when I sat on the council twenty years ago, almost twenty years ago now, gosh, you guys have been there a while. We almost, we doubled in size between two thousand one and two thousand seven. And we faced these issues about affordable housing. When I was on the council, my guiding document was the growth policy master plan. And my main concerns were affordable housing and protecting the integrity of neighborhoods. What I always seemed to do was go for the integrity of neighborhoods. And it, the, the cost of always protecting the integrity of the neighborhood, protecting the integrity of the neighborhood was that I didn't protect the integrity of the whole community. I didn't protect the working, the workers. So as we go forward, I ask that you don't, aren't blind, like the way I was blind, and contributed to the problem of affordable housing. I can't believe how little has been done as far as affordable housing since I was on the council. And this is an opportunity for us to get something done in a big way. I understand the people who are concerned. I have compassion for them. Their neighborhood is going to change. My neighborhood's changed. And I came here at the time and asked you to protect the integrity of my neighborhood. And I wish I would have asked you to make sure there was more affordable housing at the time. So as you go forward, again, you're walking that fine line between the rights of the individual and the health and well-being of our community. And I ask that this time you protect the health and well-being of our community.
Thanks, Velvet.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Perishow. I reside at twenty-three nineteen Alpine Court in Whitefish, a property adjacent to the development. I'm here on behalf of myself as a nurse and my husband as a schoolteacher. And I'm asking that you oppose the development. And we've heard a lot about NIMBY and that type of thing. But Christina Schmidt said something that resonated. I'm not going to talk about the traffic, which we went over and over and over. I'm not going to talk about the event of a fire because we've run over that. But my concern is a derailment or an explosion on the train tracks and an evacuation at that point. What Christina said is a fear that I have living in that neighborhood. And I think most of my neighbors do as well. I am also president of our homeowners association and have been for eight years. So we stand opposed for that simple fact. And traffic plays in. But in the event of an emergency, there's really no way out. And I know at the January eighteenth meeting, there was discussion, well, there are two ways. There's Upper Whitefish, but that's only a viable solution, maybe five months out of the year. Another topic I'd like to address tonight is the elk migration that resides on that property. Already twice this year, I've seen a herd of fifty to a hundred elk on that property. And many of you, I'm sure, have seen one or two of those elk crossing the Big Mountain Road as you've traveled. There was a comment from the biologist that covers this area from Fish Park and Wildlife. And they absolutely said that this is a migratory pattern. And this herd of elk has been decreased in size due to development. And this development would further decrease that population. And the other topic I want to bring up, and I won't be long because I know there's a lot of people, and I appreciate you all and your time, is the proposed roundabout. Yes, that will increase the volume of traffic and the speed, but not at the cost of safety of our children and friends and family that use that bike path. We, I have young kids. They've learned to bike on that bike path. We're very fortunate. To let them bike to school on their own without a viable pedestrian bike passing is really a huge concern for me. So in closing, I just, again, appreciate your time. You guys have given us a lot of opportunity to speak. And I hope you all do the right thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki.
Good evening, mayors, councillors, friends, women, countrymen. My name is Kate Berry, and I'm a marginalized human with an unpopular opinion tonight. Thank you for giving us all reason to speak. Having known you all for so much of my life, I'm really grateful ultimately to live in a community where civil discourse about things that matters is prioritized. So regardless of how you see this issue, thank you for showing up. It's what matters. So the Mountain Gateway project has been cast as a pariah, representing all of our worst fears about the growing, this growing community. And I can see how it's an easy target. It's a level of density that we're used to pushing out of town. It magnifies the issue of traffic along the Wisconsin Corridor and raises issues of land development and fire safety. There is no part of me that does not believe that these are valid concerns. However, I want to urge us all to consider that there are humans on the other side of this. I am more than just a car that is in your way. People are being displaced left and right in our community. And this development offers one small drop in a bucket towards the solution of a growing problem that's not going anywhere anytime soon. So I think that we're facing a pivotal moment here with the Mountain Gateway project. And we have a chance to hold a developer accountable for something that ultimately, I believe, benefits our community as a whole. I get it. This change is hard. Traffic is awful. And I would love to see the land that, and the homes that currently stand there remain. But I don't think that that's actually the issue that we're facing here. What's in front of us is not a question of if, but how and for who this land is developed for. My understanding is that the use by right on this land actually accommodates for far more units than is currently proposed. That equals more traffic, more humans. But conversely, no community benefit, no roundabout, no deed restricted apartments, no land for affordable housing, no land for a firehouse that we desperately need in that part of town. So to me, it feels more important to ask not what are we fighting against, but what are we fighting for? If we're really looking to maintain community character and prioritize responsible growth, I think that it's crucial that we give the green light to developments like Mountain Gateway that offer solutions for fire safety, attainable housing, and ease traffic flow. By no means are any of these things one and done solutions. This is complex. But I think that this is also an awesome place because it has access to public transportation, pedestrian trails, bike paths. And I see this, like I see everything as an opportunity. I think Whitefish has an opportunity to be a model for other resort towns, approving solutions to the housing crisis and working with community-minded developers in order to make sure that the people who help make Whitefish such an incredible place to live that we actually get to call it home to. I'm a social worker. My husband, he's a bartender. And we own our home thanks to a local affordable housing program. It's nothing short of a blessing for us to have a house in a killer location that doesn't break our bank every month. Because of this, we've been able to get our cars off the road and ride our bikes to get to school and to work. We've been able to make investments in our educational and creative pursuits that are fully in service of our community, donating our time, energy, and our tiny bit of money to causes that we care about and doing our best to devote ourselves to being part of what makes Whitefish so wonderful. And that, I believe, is the true impact of ensuring that middle and low-income folks like us get to call this place home too. Because when people have the opportunity to live, work, play, and invest their hearts in the same community, I think it ends up being a win for everyone. Thank you all for your time and service, and thank you all for your voices.
Thanks, Kate.
Good evening, Rhonda Fitzgerald, four twelve Lubfer. I blew it. Last meeting I was online and I thought we were the ones who were in line to be first. So I came. And I would have liked to have followed Brian Schott and just said no. But you know what? I've waited a long time. So I'm going to elaborate on it a little bit. I believe that we need, more than anything in our community, affordable housing. I also believe that there is a lot of information out there on best practices for housing that actually works in a community. And I do not believe that this is a solution that is in any way helpful to us. I've been very distressed to hear this project described as a housing solution for our community because it's not. These are massive buildings with a huge parking lot, five hundred cars almost, that is so out of character with any part of Whitefish or Whitefish itself. Affordable housing should be scattered around the community in places where you don't need a car, close to work, close to shopping, close to schools, close to medical care, close to jobs. This is not. And we don't have any guarantee that any of these units would be affordable for anybody who works here. Not at all. These could easily become like some of the other projects that have been built that we thought would be places where people could live. There's no guarantee. And probably it won't be affordable because this is an out-of-state, for-profit real estate investment trust. And they are charged with delivering profits to their investors. We have to take this profit thing out of the solution. We have to form nonprofit public-private partnerships and get the housing built. Little bit here, little bit there, mixed in with the rest of the community. Get people out of their cars. Don't make them drive. Everybody's talking about the traffic. Yeah, don't increase it. People, that's not a solution for our community. And as far as the actual affordable units, it's really only twenty-six net gain because they're going to scrape eight, that we all know people who've lived in those. So we're getting twenty-six, and we don't even know if we'll get them. You know, let's say Alta Views, think Alta Views. Think Alta Views. We didn't get those affordable units, and those were dangled as the reason to reapprove that project. I think the quarry, Alta Views, all these things, I thought all of those would be places where people could live, and they are not. In fact, these could be 30-day rentals, very profitable. Buy a couple of these, put them on Facebook Marketplace, nobody can catch you, and nobody lives there. So I'm opposed. I'm in favor of solving our problem. I don't think this is a solution. I'd also like to say that the sort of just added-on commercial development is an outrageous travesty, completely inappropriate, undesirable, and the idea that that would prevent people from driving their car because they'd grocery shop there? Sure, because, you know, they need affordable housing, so they're going to pay a premium for a mini-mart at the foot of the ski hill. You're going to get a gas station, you're going to get a coffee kiosk, you're going to get a mini-mart, who knows? Lot of turnover. That is a completely inappropriate thing to do out there, and that land should be developed in neighborhoods similar to all the neighborhoods around it. That's what I think. Let's get busy getting some affordable housing and quit wasting all our time and all our effort and hundreds of comments to prevent something that everyone knows deep in their bones is wrong for the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Rhonda.
My name's Elizabeth Pittman. I live at 384 Sawtooth Drive. So I'm going to come forward as a representative of, I would say, middle-class and the younger generation of Whitefish residents who are not supportive of the Mountain Gateway Project. As a lifelong resident of Whitefish, I had to work extremely hard to afford to make a life in Whitefish, and I had to live with my parents for multiple years to afford that, embarrassingly so. But I am very sympathetic to the housing crisis. There is no doubt we have a large problem to solve in regards to affordable housing. The answer is not in continuing to marry affordable housing to developers, developers who do not have the best interests of Whitefish and its community members at heart. Profit is their main goal, not the Whitefish community. A large number of the community members, one who write before me, have spoken against the Mountain Gateway Project, have laid the very foundation of Whitefish and everything you love about it. The number of community members from last week who spoke, I could name almost every building and Nordic ski track and everything that they've done to make the town probably why a lot of us moved here, or I was born here, but why a lot of you moved here. Those people are against this project, and we need to heed their warning. They made this town what we love. They've given years of service and commitment to our community. They provide the tools and experience necessary to resolve the issues we face. It's time for my generation, the next generation, to start taking notes and tap into the knowledge and wisdom that they can provide. They have done amazing things in this community. Whitefish is full of problem solvers. It's time to start exchanging phone numbers. It's time to start talking and taking on this problem together. It has to be a cross-generational problem. It's not the young versus the old, the poor versus the wealthy. We are a community, we all live here together, and we need to start working together. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Sharon.
My name is Sharon Morrison. I live at 400 Morrison Road up on Northwoods. I, that is up Reservoir Road, as you probably know. Do I need to pull this down a little bit? And I usually do. And my only egress, my only way of getting off of the mountain anywhere is via Wisconsin. And I share that characteristic with every person who lives on the East Lake Shore and on the North Lake Shore. And I share that characteristic with every person who lives on Big Mountain, and with every person who lives in Iron Horse, and with every person who lives on Suncrest, and with all of my neighbors on Reservoir Road, Northwoods, and then all of the land that goes off toward Columbia Falls that has no alternative route down to the, all of us only get out of our location via Wisconsin. And that's what brings me here, because I came across a lesson that maybe you know, maybe you don't, and I thought it was maybe productive to let you know. So most of us know about the campfire, the Paradise Fire in California, the biggest fire in the history of California in 2018. But what a lot of people don't know is that 10 years before, there was a series of fires in that same area, that's Butte County in California. And as a result of those fires, a grand jury was convened to examine the evidence and to come up with recommendations on how to proceed. The grand jury came up with one principal recommendation, and that was a moratorium on new home construction until there was infrastructure improvement to make the infrastructure safe for evacuation in case of a fire. The county ignored that recommendation altogether. And I would say that in that area, in Butte County around Paradise, the population increased from 7,000 to 24,000 in a relatively short space of time. So there are lessons to be learned for Whitefish from that area. But they didn't improve the infrastructure, and they did allow the increased construction to go on. And then fast-forward a decade to 2018, and in the early hours of the morning on November 3rd, the campfire started, and it burned at a rate of a football field every second for two days. And because it started early in the morning, most people were in their homes. So the evacuation of all of those people involved most of the people who live in the houses, and they all leaped in the cars, of course, because the fire was burning at such a rate. And they attempted to evacuate, but of course, there were mishaps and such because there were inadequate evacuation routes. And ultimately, cars were parked, whop-e-jawed on the side of the road or on the road or whatever, and people leapt out and ran for their lives and their cars. We've all seen the pictures of the charred, burning cars along those roads. Eighty-six people died, and that was because they didn't deal with the infrastructure and evacuation first. And, you know, I think, we live in a town that everybody wants to live in, and there will be houses, but prioritize and first say, what will make it safe? And Wisconsin isn't safe. There's one outlet, and that's over the Viaduct. If you know how to do it, you can go over to Second Street, or you can go over to the Blue Moon, but most people, most new residents don't know that. So it's going to be the campfire all over again. So I just implore you to please, I'm sure, I'm sure the people in Paradise wish they could turn the clock back, but you have the advantage of learning from their very sad situation, and I would ask that you do that. And I just want to say one other thing, and that is that when, back in the early 1970s, when Whitefish was just zoning, beginning to zone more aggressively, Frank and I actually advocated for the zoning, though it was not a popular position to take. But we said, you know, you buy a house, it's your biggest investment, and you want to know that down the road 20 years, you're not living next to a commercial establishment or a high-density development. So that's why you zone. And I ask you to remember that. Thanks.
Thanks, Sharon.
Hi, my name is David Blair. I live at 435 Park Avenue, Whitefish. Good evening. I have been a permanent member of the Whitefish community for several years, and I am opposed to the Mountain Gateway Development Project for the same reasons I'm sure you've heard, which you have, we've all been here, we've listened to it hundreds of times by now, the potential catastrophic traffic conditions, the displacement of wildlife habitats, and the general exhausting sense of if you build it, they will come, which is something I know after the past few years, we'd all like to see slowed down a bit, if at all possible, to just take a breath, rather than like rush into more people, better, you know, build it better, bigger, faster. In my opinion, the last thing our town needs is another situation that caters to wealthy tourists and fair-weather snowbirds. What it needs is affordable housing, full stop, not a hollow, unenforceable pledge to include a few affordable units in an otherwise well-centered complex, not something conditional, but something dependable and necessary, like the Whitefish Community Foundation is doing, like what the Whitefish Housing Authority is doing. The Mountain Gateway Development will only contribute to the heart attack of this town. We will lose our artists, more of our customer service workers, the very people who give this town its heart, all because they can't afford to live here anymore. And what will replace them will be people with no vested interest in the integrity of our community, who view it solely as their own personal playground. As someone recently affected by our housing crisis here in town, I can say, for me, Whitefish is not currently moving in the right direction. Please vote no on approving the Mountain Gateway Development. I know this is a hard decision. It is not black and white, it is very gray. Thank you for listening, and have a great night.
Thanks, David.
Tony Patterson, 3804 Big Sky Street. At the last meeting, I heard, I believe, the planning director state that this could move forward as a clear community benefit. I don't want to take issue with that. I believe that was largely based on the donation of land for affordable housing and a fire station. First, on the affordable housing, I question, who's going to develop it? Not the Gateway Project developer. An individual yet to be identified? An existing agency? We don't know. A new nonprofit yet to be formed? With these uncertainties, this is not a clear community benefit at best, it's a possible community benefit. Now the fire station. I believe I heard the fire chief say that this wasn't a preferred location, but it'll work. But it's only one of a lot of sites where stations are needed. Next, the cost to build, equip, and staff the fire station isn't known, but maybe we can get some volunteers that'll help keep the cost low. Likewise, help keep the cost low, and I think it's a good idea, work collaboratively with some fire districts. Build the station, staff it, whatever. I haven't heard anything about the receptivity to this from other districts. What if they don't like that location? What if they say no? It's not in the current budget. The fire chief didn't know when or if it would be in a budget. I've not heard or seen anything from the city manager, the mayor, this council, saying that you're going to solve all these problems and build it. To me, it's a little bit like a good friend delivering to you his big box, and you open it, and it's got four incredible, beautiful, expensive sports car tires. And you say, my gosh, that's great, thank you. He says, yeah, but you've got to buy the sports car. Are you city council members prepared to buy that sports car? I submit to you that for the uncertainties that I mentioned, it's not a clear community benefit, and for all the other reasons that you've heard, you should not adopt the proposed ordinances. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you for your patience and your invitations to all of us. Antonia Malchik, 528 Ninth Street West in Whitefish. So it's clear that this is an interesting and possibly beneficial development, but it's in an absolutely terrible location that seems to be established. My understanding as a developer, we'll be able to build hundreds of units at this location whether the city approves this application or not. Is that, I have heard that that's correct, but I'm not totally certain. So this isn't about change being something that's hard to accept, and it's not about changing the character of the community, it's much more simple than that. People are going to live somewhere. The population of this planet is forecast to be 10 billion by 2050, and everywhere is going to see changes, including Whitefish. That's not what this is about. What we have is an immovable barrier to development on one side of town, which is a rail yard that has one at-level crossing, often blocked, as anyone who's trying to get their kid to mull down on time from that side can attest to, and one bridge. Encouraging large-scale development on the far side of that rail yard, just, my husband told me to cut the word crazy, so I won't. I'll quote him. So this isn't about nostalgia, it's not about fear of change, it's much more concrete than that. We have a barrier, we have a difficulty in promoting large-scale dense development on the far side of town. We can't help that. We can't ask Burlington Northern to rip up their tracks and leave, and I don't know that many of us would want that. So I'm curious why the development company is pursuing a huge development in this particular location when there are so many areas closer to downtown that could be used for infill. I live walking distance to downtown, it takes me about 19 minutes to get from my house to Coffee Traders. And until last year, there were 15 acres on my road for sale that would have been absolutely perfect for affordable housing development. If I had that kind of money, I would have done it myself. I don't know what the council should decide on this issue. It seems evident that the developer plans to go ahead with a large-scale development in this location, whether it's good for Whitefish or not, and whether we want it or not. Given the circumstances, I don't know what you should decide. I appreciate you taking so much time and consideration in thinking about it and involving the community. And I'll skip this part because I'm basically just agreeing with Elizabeth Pittman about the people in this community who have given their hearts and souls to it. So no matter which side of this decision that we stand on, we are looking across a disagreement at people who have given their lives, careers, labor, and hearts to this community. People who have worked hard, who have been in the service industry, who have moved here, who have donated time and energy. And I am not talking about the ultra-wealthy. They seem to have forgotten that many of our ancestors left Europe to escape feudalism, not to welcome it back to the Rocky Mountain West, but people who call this place home all year round and who will continue to engage in the very difficult questions of what our community looks like as it grows. And I just wanted to add that I have had some younger people in town, younger residents, some of them renters, who are opposed to this project, just chat with me, who didn't want to come comment because they didn't want to alienate people they like and respect. So, yeah, lots of people aren't represented here tonight. That is for a variety of reasons. Whitefish has worked hard for decades to support one another and build a place that people love to live in. The last few years have shown us that we built a lot of resilience and support into our local systems, but also that if we're going to have a future we can all share in, we're going to have to work even harder, and we're all going to have to do that work together. Thank you.
Thanks, Antony.
My name is Mina Elm, and I live on Rest Haven Drive. I was fortunate enough to be raised in Whitefish, and my family has lived here for five generations. Today, I am representing not only my family who still lives here, but also the voice of a younger generation who is in opposition of this project. I have had not one conversation in my community who is for the Mountain Gateway Development, and while there are so many points that have been made during these meetings that I agree with and would like to reiterate, I'm going to keep it brief. Fifteen years ago, Whitefish residents attended many planning sessions with a goal to create the Whitefish Growth Policy. Participants identified attributes of the community that they valued the most and they wanted to see preserved. They were: small-town feel and character, open spaces, scenic vistas, wildlife and wildlife habitat, public safety. The Mountain Gateway Project does not encompass any of these values, values that are held by our community today. I urge you to please not approve this project. The decision is clear, and the people have spoken. Thank you.
Thanks, Mina.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Ben Johnson, 813 Trailview Way, speaking as a private citizen. First off, thanks for your service and dedication to this community, especially through these tedious and complex issues such as tonight. I support you as you continue to employ all the tools of the toolbox for meeting our needs for community housing here. And the idea of community benefit has been brought up by several people, and I believe Kate Berry spoke more eloquently to it as "to who" and "for..." Kate Berry spoke more eloquently to it as "to who" and "for who." The community benefit for many in this room who already have their, like, safe, secure place in this community, whether it's through owning a house, you know, those aren't the people who kind of stand to gain the most from the community benefit in this project, especially considering the land banking for future affordable development at 8.8 acres, which is something Mr. Melfeld spoke to, the importance of when this council approved ARPA funding, I believe it was the beginning of November. High-density multifamily housing is not what Whitefish used to look like and is too often weaponized as an antithesis of community character. But higher-density housing is a tool we need to employ if we don't want to join the list of ski resort and mountain towns that have lost their community as the workforce is priced out, forced to move further downstream to more affordable locales, creating whole different kinds of traffic problems than those spoken so passionately about here tonight. Not that traffic isn't an issue here. I know it makes no bearing on your decision this evening, but I wanted to touch on this. And it shouldn't, and it can't, but my own charitable giving within the community, both in time and money, and as small as it is, will not decrease regardless of the outcome of tonight's vote. I applaud your integrity as you tackle the complexities of this proposal. Thank you.
Hey, guys. I'm Mayor, Council. I'm Ed Doctor. I live at 2279 Seer Lane, which is just off Big Mountain Road. I've lived there for 23 years. I own two businesses on Wisconsin, one of them for over 20 years. I know a lot of people mention infrastructure here, and I don't know how long many of you have been in Montana, but Montana's really bad at that. It's not just Whitefish. It is everywhere. We have one of the nation's lowest bed tax for motels in the entire country. You know, maybe there's funding there. Maybe someday somebody's going to pass a bill and come up with something real to solve this problem, because it isn't going to go away. We just don't do infrastructure here. And it's not your fault. It's our state. It is... I don't know if anybody... A lot of people talk about the traffic, and there's a lot of valid arguments against this project. But I did call the Department of Transportation, and I have called them in the past, and they're willing to answer any questions. You know what they told me? There hasn't been a fatality on that intersection. That's a reason not to put a stoplight there. Okay. I mean, I'm not going to give my life up because I want this development to pass. Trust me, not at all. I'm not into that. But it is a thing, and the traffic count... So I've said I've lived there for 23 years. Many of you have lived there, that long or longer. It is four months a year. It's pretty bad, for a couple hours each one of those days when the ski season's over. This development has nothing to do with that. It's been bad for a while. It's going to keep getting worse. Not one person here is mentioning all the hookups that are approved for water up on the Big Mountain right now, including the Landmark Development. We're putting thousands of people on that ski hill. This is a drop in the bucket compared to what's going to happen, and you know developers are going to rush to develop this before you annex that into the city, because they don't need conditional use permits. They don't need a lot of the money they need to develop once that is annexed. And that is a big deal to me. And again, like I said, there's a lot of valid arguments against this project. I'm obviously for it. I want to see apartments. I'm very worried about my business. I have been for a couple of years now that this is happening, you know? But the truth is, some of the arguments, maybe not so much. Roundabouts have pedestrian crossings. Every one I've ever seen does. I'm not sure why people think this one is not going to have one, but they do. And yes, wildfires are bad. Thank God we've never had one on the winter when the road's been busy. Because in the summer, even to this day, I mean, I drive back and forth to work a lot. I forget a lot of things, unknown reasons, but I do. I drive back and forth a lot. And it's really not that bad for eight months of the year. It's really, it's pleasant, you know? But I know with the development that's going on on the mountain, it's going to get a lot worse no matter what. And Department of Transportation also told me higher traffic counts lead to stop signs and road improvements. I mean, you know, let's just make the arguments real. Somebody pointed out before comparing the developer to the philanthropists that are considering withdrawing money from the town. I find offense to that. I don't think the developer's taking money from the food bank. I don't know. Are you? No? No? Okay, good. I'm just wondering. I just found that kind of offensive. I think the argument against these guys is just... I mean, some of it's reasonable, but some of it really isn't, you know? I don't know if some of you know this or not. There's a Harvard study going on about... They're doing five gateway communities in the West. I was interviewed for three hours for this project, and I said, I told her that I thought about two years ago, we were 75% working class and regular business owners and people in this town. And I said about now, we're 50/50. And she said, you're spot on. And if you don't bring any housing in, it's going to go a hell of a lot the other way, and it's going to be the billionaires against the working class. Or not against, but the majority. I think millionaires are a thing of the past around here, apparently. Pretty crazy. But it is a big deal, and we do need the water treatment plant project. We need Mountain Gateway, in my opinion. We need a lot of them. I think the assessment in 2016 said we needed 1,000 beds. We're getting a new assessment here in the coming months, saying, how many beds are we going to need? So I'm just saying, let regular people live in a cool part of town. I've lived there for over 20 years. And stop Jackson Hole-ing my Whitefish and pass this, please.
Richard.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Richard Hildner, 104 Fifth Street, Whitefish. And before I begin, I would like to make it abundantly clear this evening that I am speaking solely for myself and make no other representation. Secondly, lest I be accused of NIMBYism, I would like to point out that I live next door to the 50 Affordable Unit Mountain View Manor, as I have for the past 35 years. You have heard and will continue many legitimate reasons to deny the Mountain Gateway...
Point of order, Richard, we're getting notes that the microphone's not functioning. Just pull it closer to you, please.
Did Mr. Doctor do that?
There you go.
All right. Thank you. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I won't repeat, and I won't be as brief as Brian Schott, but I'll give it a run for his money. So you have heard and continue to hear many legitimate reasons to deny the Mountain Gateway development. I will address only one: fire, as I've done in the past. My objection is based on my 17 years of wildland fire experience with the U.S. Forest Service as a hotshot smoke jumper district fire management officer, and seven years as a Type 1 fire behavior analyst on a national fire team. In your packets, I've given you some, included some information that you might find helpful on my observations and conclusions regarding hazards and risks. There is consensus among the fire community that it is not a question of if, but when the Big Mountain face will burn off. The combination of fuels, weather, and topography are perfectly aligned to create a high degree of potential for catastrophic wildfire in an area bounded by Whitefish Lake, Reservoir Road, the Whitefish Divide, and to the north, who knows? This area has been identified as being high-risk to homes from wildfire, as noted in the 2021 Flathead County Wildfire Protection Plan. By approving Mountain Gateway, you are being asked to introduce an additional 600 to 800 persons and an additional 500 vehicles into this wildland fire environment. The basic issues are: one, egress in case of an evacuation is limited to a single way out. The WHOI guidelines call for two. The city fire master plan notes that the viaduct has a traffic load of over 15,000 vehicles per day. That's 365 days, 24/7, meaning that the summer average must be higher. The plan notes, as have others, that the level of service is F the worst possible. Mountain Gateway will add an additional 500 vehicles to this complex. Number three, no one has disputed my analysis that a mid-afternoon fire starting in August along the east shore of Whitefish Lake in the vicinity of the Mountain Gateway, with 12 mile-per-hour winds, 90-degree temperatures, and an average seasonal fuel moisture, could easily reach the Big Mountain in three and a half to four hours. Chief Page is correct that most fires... Number four, Chief Page is correct that most fires start small. However, surface fuels in the Mountain Gateway, our one-foot-tall grass, and an August fire starting in these fuels will burn through the area in less time than it takes our fire department to respond and deploy, about 16 to 20 minutes. Everything and everyone up slope and upwind of such a fire will be in grave danger. We have only two brush trucks, and they could be out of water in three and a half minutes after arrival. Number five, a 1.5-acre vacant lot is not a community benefit. It will cost millions in taxpayer dollars to build, equip, and staff a satellite station as proposed by the developer. For example, a ladder truck, just a ladder truck with live stream adequate for a four-story apartment building currently costs about $1.3 million. This is not even the city's... This location for a satellite station is not even the city's highest priority for a satellite station. In fact, we have a satellite station on Whitefish stage that is nothing more than a glorified storage unit. We can't even fully staff the station we do have. We are three firefighters short currently. Six, as a city, Whitefish must follow the International Wildland Urban Interface Fire Code as amended. Amendments are made by the Montana State Department of Labor. Here's the kicker. In 2018, the state eliminated Chapter 4 regarding Wildlife Interface Code in its entirety. Requirements that were deleted include penalties for unsafe condition, maintenance of defensible space, abatement of unsafe conditions, evacuation required, deleted in its entirety, citations are prohibited, automatic sprinkler systems are deleted. Altogether, 23 deletions from the code. As one fire official, who shall remain nameless, commented to me, "The only thing left is the cover." We all know that fire seasons are longer, drier, and more intense. I urge you to deny the Mountain Gateway proposal. To do otherwise is to put an additional 600 to 800 persons in grave peril from wildfire.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Thank you for your patience in listening to all of us tonight. I really appreciate it. My name is Whitney Geiger, and I live on Houston Drive in Whitefish. As the co-founder of Flathead Families for Responsible Growth, I can tell you that this community initiative began simply as an effort to inform our town on what would not only be a monumental shift in our community's character, but have grave and permanent ramifications for the safety of our town, as well as set a precedent for all undeveloped land moving forward. We were very diligent to share every document, every detail, because we all deserve unfiltered, undockedored, honest, transparent information. As members of the community found out what was being proposed, the immediate response was, what can I do? How can I help? Some offered their time, others offered donations where they could not volunteer their time, so that we could afford to hire attorneys and experts, so as to provide you, the city, with sound, objective reasons for denial. It has always been our intention to be an ally of the city and to foster a culture where the city and the citizens feel that they're on the same team. I want to touch briefly on a few topics that I think are very pertinent to your decision here tonight and really important to share. First, at the planning board meeting, when a board member asked the city staff how the county property would be annexed in, they were told it would be annexed in as the city equivalent of R4, which it's currently zoned at, and could not be downzoned. The fact is, after much research and referring to the legal team, that new annexations must be made in accordance with our growth policy. The growth policy designates this area as suburban residential. So therefore, the city not only has the right, but the obligation to downzone this property when and if it annexes it into the city. Second, at the last city council meeting, Giuseppe asked Mr. Page what it would cost to build, maintain, and staff a fire station at this proposed site. Mr. Page said he could not recall off the top of his head, but that the land acquisition would be roughly 50% of the build cost. I have the handouts that Mr. Page shared with the members of the community who attended his meeting that I'll give to you after this. According to those documents that Mr. Page handed out and marketed at the meeting that he co-hosted with Mr. McDonald regarding this development, he estimated the land acquisition to be $400,000 and the build cost to be roughly $3.3 million. That would put the land at only 12%, not 50, of the build cost, a substantial difference. You can also see from Mr. Page's handout that the areas that would be served by a fire station at this location are primarily county and not city. The recently adopted Fire Department Master Plan by AP Triton... Pardon me. According to the recently adopted Fire Department Master Plan, the biggest issues facing Whitefish are staffing shortages and equipment inadequacies, not the need for satellite stations. During the city council session in November, when you had your Q&amp;A with that representative from AP Triton, he stated that Whitefish needs a new fire truck that can deliver top-down water flow to stop a fire before another station. And I found it quite noteworthy. He said that this new truck will improve ISO ratings more than a new fire station. That would provide our residents protection and cost savings. Third, an issue that continually comes up is the density allowed under the current zoning versus the proposed density by the developers, and I wanted to take an opportunity to clear that up. To quote Mr. McDonald from an article in the Daily Inner Lake, "The land theoretically could have up to 561 housing units." Since you obviously can't fit 561 housing units into 30 acres without adding roads and utilities and sidewalks, et cetera, I personally sat down with landscape architects who have worked in town for decades and asked them how it works. How much acreage is eaten up by this infrastructure? You know, asked them to work me through the realities. They said about 25% to 30% of land is eaten up by this required infrastructure. So let's look at the numbers. Based on the certificates of survey, only, we reviewed them all, the entire property is 30.47 acres, with 2.7 acres deemed unbuildable due to slope and MDT easements as conveyed by the developer. 23.69 acres are zone WR2 and R4, which allow 12 dwelling units an acre. 4.08 acres are zone WR3, which allows 14 dwelling units an acre. If you reduce both by 25% to allow for the required infrastructure, you get a total density of 256 housing units. That's 62 less than what's being proposed. Furthermore, if the city annexes in the county R4 parcel as WSR, which you're obligated to do to be in compliance with the growth policy, you would see a maximum density of 204 dwelling units. That's 112 less than what they're proposing, or 35%. It's very substantial. So the densities allowed under the current zoning are significantly less than what they're proposing with their PUD overlay, and they'll have a much smaller impact on our already overburdened infrastructure if they build under their current rights. Finally, I would like to briefly touch on affordable housing. While there's a lot to say on the topic and its complexities and nuances, I want to keep my remarks focused on one area. The community efforts to address affordable housing up until this point have been founded on a principle that directly ties affordable housing to development and growth. We've repeatedly seen the flaws of this system in the shape of structures promised turning into cash in lieu of... in the past. And as a reminder to the public, as well as the council, these promises are moving targets. For example, on your February 22 agenda, you have a request from the Trailview subdivision to amend their conditions of approval for their development to reduce the number of deed-restricted units from 58 down to 48. It's our opinion that making affordable housing dependent on development and growth is inherently flawed and will leave us constantly on the merry-go-round without any real solutions. Our community is uniquely blessed with... Our community is uniquely blessed with citizens who dedicate countless volunteer hours, as well as many generous philanthropists. And while solutions were in the work already, the Mountain Gateway project has powerfully reignited the creation of the nonprofit, non-growth-dependent-solution-housing Whitefish, which I believe has so much more promise for creating real solutions for our community. And to quote Mr. Mulfield in his recent email published in the Flathead Beacon, "This council cannot and will not make decisions based upon a promise of support, financial or otherwise. As council, we are required to apply the criteria set forth in the Whitefish City Code and state law when making land use decisions. To allow any promise from the developer regarding land donations or affordable housing to factor into your decision here tonight would be unlawful by your own accord." And we, and me personally, have spent months and countless hours building you a mountain of sound, legal reasons based on local and state laws that not only justify denial of these applications, but demand it. The response for the community has been awe-inspiring and record-breaking. In such a time of social and cultural challenges, as well as our town being in a state of crisis with growth, labor shortages, and the like, everyone's mustering the energy to show up for Whitefish. They wrote letters, donated their time and money, and have come out to the many planning board and city council meetings. To have a large percentage of town advocating for what they want is truly a reminder of why we're all so deeply in love with Whitefish and Montana. Please join your neighbors, your friends, your business owners in advocating for our community. Set the standards high. Honor our growth policy and local and state laws, and deny these applications for the PUZ and the zone change. Protect the integrity of our community's character and the safety of our current and future residents by doing your part to not allow growth to outpace our infrastructure and to preserve the values of our town, so it continues to be loved, enjoyed, and coveted. Thank you. Can I provide these to you?
Thanks, Whitney. To our city clerk, please, if you don't mind.
To the clerk?
Yes.
Hello, I'm Heather Welch. I live at 501 Park Ave., and I'm what seems to be one of the very few renters that are saying anything, because I happen to have today free. So I've worked with Forest Service as a seasonal employee for six seasons and four of those as a wildland firefighter. I initially came to the valley as an AmeriCorps volunteer in 2013. I'd like to touch on my experience watching my incoming coworkers from out of state trying to find real housing in this valley, let alone Whitefish. I've been lucky enough to have a rental grandfather down to me, but to be an incoming resident is something I couldn't even imagine right now. One of my coworkers this past season, a wildland firefighter protecting our forest that we enjoy, he lived in a pop-up camper from May to late November with his wife and dog, because that was the only option. Many hotshots have to live in their truck on their two days off after a 14- to 21-day roll. That's 16 hours breathing in smoke, camping on the ground, and just being dirty, simply. These are people that work 1,000 hours of overtime in less than six months, and they have to live in their truck and can't afford or even find anywhere to live. We can do better in this valley and Whitefish. These are seasonal workers that make this valley safe to live in and provide recreational opportunities in the lands we love. You talk about staffing issues, well, they can't find anywhere to live. Okay. This includes, too, line cooks, housekeepers, lifties, trail dogs, river rats. Not long ago, we were praising essential workers, while these are people essential for a functional tourist town. I'd like to also state that every few months, another one or a couple of my friends get evicted from their homes, and this includes wildland firefighters, healthcare workers, social workers, line cooks. It can-- I mean, the line, it goes on. And sometimes the only thing that these people can do is leave. They just leave. They can't be here anymore. I support the Mountain Gateway, which is clearly unfavorable, but I am ashamed to admit that I initially signed the Whitefish Development Petition on Change.org against the development. I feel their methods were deceptive, and I feel that this petition was reexamined. Many others would feel similar. So with the 3,854 votes that is on there right now, you can count me out. After hearing about Maverick Jones threatening to withhold funds from the Whitefish community organizations, I felt I could no longer silently stand by. I refuse to have our town held hostage by a man in a castle on a hill. I feel that the developer has more than adequately addressed concerns on this development, and I support the Mountain Gateway for the homes it will provide for the working class of Whitefish. Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Hi, I'm Marika Staub. I live at 500 Bootjack Lake Road, and I am also a longtime renter and a longtime workforce laborer. I don't know how many of you have rented. You're all secure homeowners, most likely? I mean, maybe you rented and then you were able to own. It's hard. All my friends are leaving. The apartments across the street by the VFW, they're getting evicted. The building over on Central Avenue where people live in low-income housing, now I just saw a permit for other condominiums. Like, people don't have a place to live. And I don't even care if these apartments are affordable or not. They're gonna be at least a house that people can try to live in, or have like three, or four, or five people live in, because it's the only option. You had the Sustainable Tourism meeting before this, and you were talking about short-term housing. That's taken over our town and community. It's a very serious issue, and I know it's another issue, but it's just exacerbating upon itself. And I just, I don't know what to say. I've been back and forth. All these arguments are great. I don't envy your position and the decision you have to make. It's gonna be hard, but as a renter in this valley and someone who's hoping to buy a house, now I can't, because they're $1 million. That's the median house, average price, and now I can't. And before I lived in-- I'm in a secure rental right now. I'm very privileged. I'm very, very thankful, but prior to that, I lived in a month-to-month lease. You know how stressful that is, to not know if you're gonna get kicked to the curb every month? We were unsure of whether or not we would be able to live here. Thankfully, I'm privileged enough and educated, and I have like savings where I can move out of this town if I need to. I don't want to, but I might have to. And I'm just like the rest of you. I love living here. It's amazing. I love hiking. I go skiing. I sit in traffic, and I love it, because I get to see my friends and wave at them and wonder where they're going. I just think all of the problems and the issues are things that can be solved. I think you can have an evacuation plan. That can be solved. We can solve these traffic issues. Let's like, think big. Let's put another bridge over the railroad. Let's increase public transportation issues, or like, public transportation. I love taking the bus. I lived in Chicago. I didn't have a car for six years. I didn't have a car when I moved here in 2013. I walked to the bus every day. I walked to the bus in waist-deep snow for miles to get to work. It's possible to figure it out, figure out this traffic issue. I just don't think we're thinking big enough. People are just so against it, because it's change. But we need change. We need to figure out how to keep people like me here, who are-- I'm your bartender. I'm your friendly local bartender. I'm your friendly local seamstress. I'm the housekeeper. I clean all your giant houses every week, you know? Like, you're not gonna have those people anymore, and we're gonna turn out to be just like Summit County, Colorado, where they declared a state of emergency because they don't have enough housing for normal people. We're gonna be just like Sun Valley, Idaho, where they have to bus people in an hour from an hour away to work in their resort. It's ridiculous. And I loved, I did my research. I watched the meetings. James did a great presentation. I felt like it made a lot of, it solved a lot of the problems if you just looked at the-- and Wendy gave a great presentation and explained a lot about it, and I just don't know if everyone really listened, because then you just came up here and like talked about issues that were addressed. And I think we need to maybe look at that presentation again and see the final product, because I think people are just hung up on the past phases of this project, and we need to look at, you know, what it actually is gonna be. But anyways, we need housing. Traffic's gonna be there. Fire's gonna be there. We need housing, and it's dire. We needed housing yesterday, and we needed housing last year or two years ago, and we can't just not do it. And finally, someone who is from here wants to make that happen, and I appreciate it, and I hope you follow through, because this property is gonna be developed anyways, and this kinda is the best, worst-case scenario in my mind. Like, it's gonna be developed, regardless of what you guys want or think. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Marika.
And I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your comments.
Nathan Dugan, 937 Callasbell Avenue. That's a lot easier than going first. Four months into this process, we find ourselves at a pivotal decision point, not just for the Mountain Gateway, but for our community. Let's take a brief trip down memory lane. In 2013, apartments were proposed on Second Street, rejected by the neighbors, and single-family homes that are now $1 million were erected instead. In 2019, a 234-unit apartment complex was approved by city council, but was overly conditioned at the time of approval and could not be built due to costs. In 2020, two fairly small apartment buildings were proposed on Seventh Street, and this too was opposed by the neighbors, many of whom also opposed the apartments on Second Street, and now $700,000 condominiums stand in their place. All of these would have provided affordable housing units, up to 20%, and unfortunately, we have nothing to show for it and have exacerbated our housing crisis. We are now presented with an opportunity to right those past mistakes, stand up for our own, and prove to the nation who is watching that Whitefish values its local workers above all else, and that Whitefish can buck the negative housing trend afflicting mountain towns throughout the West. Despite our best intentions, in recent years, we've continuously proved that when it comes to housing, we are the rule, not the exception, as we often like to think that we are and can be. I would wager my house in Whitefish that affordable housing has never been built adjacent to a country club in the history of the modern United States, and it isn't hard to guess why that is, given what we've seen transpire over the past four months in our own backyard. We now have a chance to build just that, and next to one of the most exclusive country clubs in Montana to boot. In addition to this development being identified in the Wisconsin Avenue Corridor Plan and standing on firm legal ground, we should not pass this opportunity by on moral grounds. In our discourse, we have reduced our neighbors and friends with more modest means, who don't already own a home here, to an inconvenience in our daily lives in Whitefish. They are nothing more than traffic, a fire risk, or an impediment to our mountain views. We oppose vital multifamily housing with tears in our eyes, while ignoring the tears of those who have been pushed out of this place that they love or were born in, or who lose sleep on a nightly basis for fear of losing housing at any moment, as so many others have. It is a monumental feat of privilege and luck that a middle-class person like myself can buy a home in present-day Whitefish, and it becomes more difficult with every passing day. I'm asking you to vote in favor of both items in front of you tonight pertaining to Mountain Gateway to provide this vital housing and affordable housing to our community members, who have needed it for so, for years, and who have seen it not built time and time again. Thanks.
Thanks, Nathan. Further public testimony this evening. Further public comments. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing on both ordinance 22-02 and 22-03.
John? We have one online.
That just registered?
They've been sitting there for a while.
Okay.
So, thank you. The Haul Crows, please unmute your mic and state your name and address, please. The Haul Crows, I have just unmuted your mic, so please state your name and address, please.
Not working?
Not working. Go ahead.
With that said, we will, I will close the public hearings on 22-02 and 22-03. I believe we will be having a discussion on these matters this evening, but for now, we need to take about a seven-minute recess, and we'll read adjourn at about 10:04. Thank you.
Further comments on the motion. Rebecca.
Yeah, I would have loved to approve this, to get this amount of housing. But the overwhelming opposition is kind of the tell for me that we're not moving in the right direction for a number of people. But there's a lot of things I really like about the project. And so I'm hoping that you'll come back in with some changes to the way that it's configured. I was the Chair of the Wisconsin Avenue Corridor Plan. And at that time, for instance, I think the commercial space could work if it was much smaller. And I wasn't sure, we didn't really decide that the roundabout was an appropriate thing at that time. But after listening to all the traffic engineers, I think it could actually work as long as pedestrian use was incorporated. I personally have some issues with the water. The water risks down in that area because we have had a failure of a fish pond years before and it went all the way down to the Houston Point area. And so I, I'm not sure I really, I'm not sure if we vetted the retention pond as much as we should have. But anyways, bottom line is if we see overwhelming public opposition, I usually will do the will of the people that I represent. And I'm hopeful that it won't mean that we never get any more housing. So that's what I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Thanks Rebecca. Frank.
Mr. Mayor and Giuseppe, if I might proffer a couple of further thoughts and amendments to the findings that were delivered to us by staff that I think reflect what we've all learned over the past six, five or six public hearings. I'd like to change finding two in the staff report to state that the developer, development is and may, or may not be sensitive to, respectful to the wildlife habitat or seasonal migration corridors, corridors that are there. I'd like to change finding four of the staff report to state that the development will not preserve and protect the character and qualities of the existing neighborhoods. The existing neighborhoods are suburban density homes or on large wooded lots. The scale, quality and density of development cannot be integrated in the existing surrounding neighborhoods, nor can it be effectively buffered. I'd like to change finding 10 to state that the development does not substantially comply with the 2007 city-county growth policy or the Wisconsin Corridor Plan. The 2007 growth policy designates the property as suburban residential, as described as predominantly single-family homes with low density. The development will not further the future land use goals of preserving and enhancing the character qualities of small-town feel and ambience of the whitefish community. It likewise will not further the goals of protecting and preserving the special characters, scale and qualities of the existing neighborhoods. The development will not further the transportation policy of encouraging sustainability in all aspects of transportation so that the needs of the present, of the present are met while ensuring the future generations have some better opportunities. While the Wisconsin Avenue Corridor Plan designates the property as key development areas, it also provides that it should be developed in a manner to preserve the most, most of its suburban character. A 270-unit apartment buildings will not, are not consistent with the suburban character. The development does not further the goals and policies of the corridor plan. And it does not provide diverse housing in the corridor while protecting, while protecting the community character and existing neighborhoods. It does not support cohesive, distinctive, diverse residential neighborhoods that are compatible with existing neighborhoods. It does not encourage unified development that mitigates the potential impacts on adjacent neighborhoods and reflects the neighborhood's scale and character that contributes to the vibrant corridor. It does not, it is not in accordance with the growth policy. It is not designated, designed to secure safety from fire and other dangers due to density and probable traffic impacts. It is not designed to promote public health, safe, public safety and general welfare due to its density and probable traffic impacts. I'd like to change finding 13 to the development does not provide adequate community benefits. I'd like to change finding one of the zone change, oh, we'll get to that in a moment. Those would be my suggested edits to the findings if this proceeds.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment to the original motion. Is there a second?
Frank, under two, did you, under finding number two where it talks about wildlife, are you saying there isn't wildlife there?
No, I'm saying it is not sensitive to the wildlife corridors that go through here.
Right, okay, thank you.
Again, I'll take that as a friendly amendment to the findings of fact. Is there a second to the motion? Let me get a second on the floor, Steve, please.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Fury.
I, Steve. I'm just confused as to what, I mean, we don't have a definition of a clear community benefit. We have like a list of several things that can be considered a clear community benefit. And so I'm wondering what, what it is you're seeing that would change that last, the last finding of fact that you mentioned, that it does not promote, does not provide a clear community benefit.
Okay, would you like me to articulate?
Sure.
I can do this. The development is only providing 32 build deed restricted apartments out of 270. While the applicant is offering 8.8 acres to be developed with 48 affordable units, it is not proposing to build those units. The additional property is not located in an area that's suitable for affordable housing given the traffic challenges on Wisconsin and its distance from services. The applicant is offering 1.5 acres for a fire station but is not proposing to build the fire station or contribute to its construction, and the fire station is not within the city's budget. The applicant is not offering to install, is offering to install roundabout, but we have no approval for that and nor has he given us any approval from MDT that that could and will be an actual roundabout or that it will in fact benefit. So that's the reason I asked for that change.
I, I take objection to the way several of those were worded based on the facts that we have in the packet, particularly the roundabout, because that was identified even by the opposing traffic study person as a way that, that would mitigate the traffic at that intersection for one. Just as, as matter of course, I know it's not approved by the MDOT yet, but according to the packet, it had to be constructed before anything could be built on that property. So, I mean, it, you know, it doesn't matter, but I think that, I don't, I honestly don't see how anybody would ever give more than this with, on a PUD and not have it, and us say, well, that's not a clear community benefit. Even 32, you're saying we're only getting 32. They don't have to give us any. I mean, that's how much, I don't understand like where, what defines a clear community benefit if, if, if that's, if, if even that is not enough, so.
Giuseppe.
Yes, just a point of clarification, Frank. If I'm correct, my motion is accepting the finding of facts of the planning board.
Correct.
Okay, so I, unless I misunderstood you, your, your findings, I mean, your request for amendment changes the wording, but not the substance of all those findings. Am I correct? Because the planning board found two, four, 10 and 13 as non-fulfilling. So we're confirming similar things, but you put in more words.
And, and I added a few others that I, that they did not pick up on.
Okay, that, perfect, just making sure.
Further discussion on the friendly amendments to the findings. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like, sign, and the motion does carry on a five to one vote with Counselor Quinell voting in opposition, which brings us back to the original motion, which is for denial of ordinance 22 dash 02. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
I'd like to make some comments, Mr. Mayor, if I could, on the original motion.
Certainly.
I know it's late, but I think there are some things that need to be said here because it seems like after all this, you know, I've sat through about 14 hours now of public comment, and, and it's taking us less than 10 minutes to deny this thing. And I, I think there are some things that need to be said. And with respect to the findings of fact, we are summarily disregarding what our own staff has said and taking the word for, taking the word for it from a group that was designed solely to oppose this project based on their analysis, based on the people that they paid to analyze this. And I, I think that that's, I don't think that does our community a great service, to be honest with you. But I would like to just address one thing that Rebecca said in that the will of the people. We, we can't make a decision based on the will of the people. We have to make a decision based on the facts. And I get it, but we have a disagreement on the facts here, and that's fine. But we, if we solely bend to the will of the people anytime that they disagree with what is coming or what is proposed, that is, that is doing a disservice to, to us as what we are, what we're up here for. We are supposed to listen to the people and take their, their concerns into account. And I get it, I disagree with the way that, that it's been proposed on the other side. But just because 3,800 people disagree doesn't give us the leverage to say no to something. And I would like to address some of the public input. I, I hear everyone out there that disagrees with this as a too dense, in the wrong place. I get it. Nobody wants to drive by and increase traffic over there. But we act like if this, if we, if we deny this project, that somehow nothing's gonna get built on the north side of the viaduct without us declaring a moratorium, like Ms. Morrison said, on growth north of the viaduct. I'd like to see us try to pass that and see, see what we get, see what happens in our community and also in our state. We're not gonna stop development north of the viaduct. And with every single new home built and new condo built up on Big Mountain, the traffic is going to get worse. It's going to get worse. And there's nothing we can do to stop it, unless we can look at projects like this and say, wow, we're actually getting something in return for something that is built there. And in this case, I do think there is a clear community benefit. We're getting 32 units and we're getting at least some traffic mitigation. We're getting a place to put our fire station, which the chief is on board with. We're not gonna build it yet. We can't. It's not in the budget, but we have a place for it. We have, also have to have land for a fire station. So, you know, I've read through all the public comment. One, one in particular said, we need to deny this to send a message that whitefish is closed. Whitefish is closed to the, is closed to development. What we've just, what we're about to do is send the message that whitefish is closed to the working class because we have been faced with project after project after project to include affordable housing in our community. And every time we sit up here and deny it, and I've been part of council, of, part of planning boards that have denied it, and I have voted against it on council on one occasion, and I can't do it anymore. We are at a crisis and we have to address this. And addressing it in the public, private sector, I called the Whitefish Housing Authority. You know how much money's been donated to housing whitefish? $17,000. That's how much is, that's how much our public-private partnership is, is in the black right now. So, you know, people are saying that this is gonna destroy our town. Well, let's look at what has destroyed Aspen and Crested Butte and Winter Park and Jackson. Did it die because we built, they built apartment complexes there? No, it died the death of a thousand cuts. All of the working class was forced out, forced down valley. Very same thing is happening here. The only place that's building apartments is Kalispel, and they just finished some in Columbia Falls. Where is that traffic going? A lot of it's going over the viaduct and up the mountain. Thinking that, thinking that denying this is gonna, is not gonna impact our traffic problem, anytime somebody moves to this place, it's going to impact traffic on Wisconsin. Another thing I want to talk about is managing growth responsibly because I've been called to the carpet a couple times in this, in the course of this project. And I want everyone to know in this room and online that I make my decisions based in fact and what the impacts these developments will have on our town. And I, I would love to be able to fund a petition against incorporating any new hotel rooms or any new beds for tourists. Yet that's what we've faced in the last two months, and we've approved one of them and we fought one of them, we might lose in court on the other. So, but not one single person in this room who opposed this project came out and opposed providing more beds for tourists in this town. Not one single person. Okay, maybe Rhonda. So tell me, is it responsible to approve more housing for tourists, short-term residents, while denying long-term housing for working people? Is that responsible growth? I don't think so. And I think everyone in here feels that and knows that deep down in their bones. So, my heart aches tonight. It honestly does. This town, maybe it has changed. Maybe it's changed to the point where, where we say we want affordable housing, we say we support affordable housing, but we're just not willing to have it anywhere near us unless we can find some city-donated land that's out of the way that nobody really sees because it's off of a dirt road. That's, it seems like that's where we are today.
Steve, we got a couple of counselors that would like to provide some comments as well.
Okay, I'll, I'll finish here, but I'm gonna take my time. I'm gonna read to you an email I got from the homeless housing coordinator for Flathead, for Kalispel Public Schools. Hello KPS employees, some of you know I'm a teacher in Flathead High School. As you've likely heard by now, extended stay guests at the Fairbridge, AKA the outlaw, have been given eviction notices by the end of next week. It's likely we'll have a handful of families in our district with nowhere to go. Vacancy rate in this valley is 0.4%, which means there aren't many options. We need your help. If you or someone you know has rental property or any alternative that could prevent these families from being on the street, a camper, a vacant rental, et cetera, please reach out. The HART program has been in touch with the families in our district and is offering assistance financially if they can find a vacancy. The problem is real. I deal with it on the front lines every day of the week. Some of these kids are in my classroom, some of these kids are in classrooms here in whitefish. So, the last thing I want to say is what does it, what does it make, what makes a community? Because I think that's what we're losing sight of here. The community that is whitefish once was a diverse community where people who made living wages versus people who had other careers lived next door to each other. And we're losing that. We are losing that. And I will, as long as I occupy a seat up here, I will continue to fight to keep this town with that kind of character. And that is, that is really the crux of what is going on here. We have to look, we have to build affordable housing. We have to look at it wherever it is. It's designed in our growth policy to be sprinkled throughout the community. We, unfortunately, given the price of building, it has to be created in denser areas. And sometimes we have to give a little to get a little. And I just don't see any, I just don't, I don't see the compromise much at all anymore. And that's, if that's what's happened in our town, then it truly has changed.
Ben and then Rebecca.
So I find this to be one of the most difficult decisions I've had up here, and I, I wrestled with this for weeks. I mean, the reality is we need housing and we do need it badly. And what we have in front of us is one proposal that may help with that. On the other hand, there are a lot of legitimate concerns that we've heard from a lot of people. And there's, like honestly, there is a lot of rational, thoughtful people that can come down on either side of this issue, and I know I've found myself struggling with it. So I look to our growth planning, as we're supposed to do up here in this decision-making process. And the Wisconsin Avenue Corridor Plan has several pages devoted to this exact parcel. It summarizes in, in basically a sentence. It says, "It is recommended that the application for development be for a planned unit development that will retain most of the suburban character of the site and the surrounding neighborhood." In the context of growth planning, suburban generally means something pretty close to single-family homes. There's multiple zoning districts underlying here, but that's generally speaking what the long-term planning says. Now, we have a process here that allows us to, in fact, the underlying zoning, I don't even think provides for multifamily buildings at all, at least for most of it. Now, we have a process here that allows us to change that. And I think that's a good thing, but the problem here for me is it, it just seems like too much. It's like we take an area that is generally envisioned and relied upon as something close to single-family homes, and here we have a project that is the largest residential development in the history of the community. It just feels out of place. I don't mind the development. I actually think it'd be good to have somewhere. I just have issues with this location. I think a lot of people do. And all the problems that have been brought up with this, the traffic, the pedestrian access, safety, fire safety, health safety, community character, a lot of those are all extensions of this problem. The town, to me, just does not seem like it is designed for this size and scale of a development in this exact location. So I don't, there's been a lot of strong talk here, and I, I do, I take this very seriously, and I, I know people get passionate about this stuff. But here's the thing, for me, there is a lot of, this is a predominantly market-rate housing development, and the problem in our community and in the country as a whole is housing frankly is inexpensive, is too expensive everywhere and certainly here. I do believe that this community has said that this is not the correct solution to this lot, and I trust we will see you back here with a different proposal that will also have market-rate housing. I'm sure it'll be a, a good number of it. But hopefully it'll be a little bit more reflective of what the long, the community's long-term vision is in this area. So there's my summary. I mean, I know we're arguing about some details and finding of facts, but ultimately I do believe all of that rolls up to the simple fact that this is just not what we intended to be here. So tough decision, but that is where I'm gonna land on this. And if other folks disagree, I understand.
Thanks, Ben. Rebecca.
Just, so Steve, you know, when we, I think it was 18 months, I think Dave, that we did the Wisconsin Avenue Corridor Planning and our consultants, who are excellent planners, identified these key areas which we would grow. One of them turned into Alpenglow, which is an affordable housing project. We upzoned that intentionally through land use, changing the land use at the time of our planning to make that happen. And then there was another apartment complex that we upzoned intentionally through land use planning changes so that that would be allowed because we knew that we were losing the apartments across the street because their 20-year agreement to keep them affordable was expiring. So we, we knew that there were cer- certain areas that we could actually get things done really quickly. This one never really came in with a lot of agreement. The neighbors, because there's another adjacent property on the lake, the neighbors immediately came in with a lot of alarm, alarm and things like that. And so what we did was we did not change any of the underlying land use at that time, even though they'd hired a private planner to present things to us at several meetings because we knew that it needed to be a very large community discussion, that the community all had some kind of a buy-in to this exact location, even though it's privately owned. And so we expected there would be a robust discussion. I personally think the community benefits were wonderful on this, and I really appreciate you working with the planning staff for that purpose. But we also have a lot of public investment in how this area grows because people love living out in that section. So I, I feel like as a city, even though it doesn't seem like we're basing it on facts because we're just listening to over nearly 4,000 people, we actually have had a long process to get us to this moment. And, and I, and I do think that's one of the reasons that makes whitefish so beautiful to me is if we really work together as a community, usually we end up with really a functional, charming town. And so when we get a really, really strong no, I think it's really important to listen to it. Really important, even if it's hard for the developers at the time, because they, they will come in with another project, I'm sure of it. And so I, I, I don't think it's our only opportunity for housing. But I do think in this particular location, it was very important to listen to the community because we knew that this was coming when we did the corridor planning.
Thanks Rebecca. Further comments? Andy.
I'll try and be very brief. Steve, I agree with you on many, many counts, but I can't myopically sit here and put the blinders on and see only housing. I can't not see all of the other challenges that this piece of property has for this kind of development. And I was one of the people that, I sat on the Wisconsin Avenue Corridor Study, and I was one of the people that opposed anything that proposed any commercial or anything on this piece of property because I knew what that piece of property was and I knew the challenges that it had. And I fully agree with you that, no, we cannot try everything in the court of public opinion up here. And while we know there were 3,854, actually 3,853 people that signed the petition now, thanks to Heather retracting her vote there. And I'm guessing that, given recent events and inclusion of housing and some of those things, we could maybe pull another 800 or so out of there. But we're still looking at a pretty overwhelming community outpouring of this is not what we want to see at this particular location. And I add all those things up in my head, and I'm just like Ben, and I think everybody's sitting up here. It is a very difficult decision, but I hear Rhonda when she says, we're looking at 24 net units here, and we have no guarantee on what those other units will ultimately end up renting for. None. Zero. I mean, they could rent for $2,000 a month. We don't know that right now. Yeah, it'll be housing, but we don't know who that housing will be for. Yeah, there'll be 24 apartments that we know will be affordable for people, but that's it. That's all we know. And that is, it is a community benefit. I'm not arguing that that isn't important. But what I can't overlook is the fact that there's gonna be another 230 there that wouldn't be necessarily. And all that does is exacerbate. And I also have to look at the fact that if we look at for dense housing in this community, we continually put it north of the viaduct. Where's all the dense housing in this community? It's all north of the viaduct. We've added 86 units just in the last couple of years, north of the viaduct. We've got other proposed projects out there in Texas. I know one's coming along that's gonna be another big project. We look at all of the other apartments. I mean, we have clustered all of that housing. We continue to add density, 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 but all ultimately feeds out on the Wisconsin Avenue. And I do have to agree with Rhonda on this, that, you know, housing is super important, but it does need to be integrated throughout the community. We can't just keep throwing it over north of the tracks and hope that... We can't just keep throwing it over north of the tracks and hope that someday the infrastructure issues will work themselves out. So I will support the motion.
With that, all those in favor of the motion as amended, please raise your hand. And those opposed like sign and the motion does carry on a five-to-one vote with Counselor Quinell voting in opposition. That brings us on to ordinance 22-0 through, and I will need a motion separate of the previous ordinance.
John, that one will be 2202.
Excuse me, 2202. Thanks, Michelle. And this is for denial of the zone change. Rebecca?
I'll make a motion to deny 2202.
Is there a second to the motion?
I second that.
Seconded by Giuseppe. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And those opposed like sign and that motion does carry on a five-to-one vote as well with Counselor Quinell voting in opposition. I wanted to thank everyone, including the applicant, for your time this evening. And it was a good discussion. Drive safe. Given the time of the evening, I would recommend or entertain a motion from the council to postpone items 6D of the agenda as well as item 6E to the February 22 meeting. I believe 6E's already been moved to the 22nd, so it would just be a motion to postpone item 6D, please.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to move ordinance item number D to our next scheduled, our C-council.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Giuseppe. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed like sign. Steve, are you?
I'm sorry.
In favor? Okay, and that, that motion does carry unanimously. Michelle? Let's just...
So just to confirm. So just to confirm, 6D has been postponed to February 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 6C, which is consideration of a request from Richard Lewis for a CUP to construct an accessory apartment over a new garage located at 800 West 7th Street. And the property is zone WR1.
Hello. I'll make this quick. I'm Jessica Nymark. I was in charge of the staff report for this. This is a request for an ADU by Richard Lewis. The property is addressed 800 West 7th Street. It's in a WR1 zone. They are requesting a CUP to construct an accessory dwelling unit, 600 square feet of living space above a new two-car garage, which would be 884 square feet. It's currently developed as a single-family residence. It has a detached garage, storage shed, and a small wood shed. The existing garage and storage sheds would be removed as part of the proposed project. And it is accessed from a shared driveway off of West 7th Street to the south. The property is approximately 1.125 acres. And the surrounding areas are all residential, either WR1 or WR2. WR1, how it's zoned, does correspond with the growth policy designation, which is urban. All utilities are already supplied because it's within the city limits. And there was a mailing and a sign placed on the property and no public comments were received. We find that it matches the growth policy, WR1 and urban, for finding number one. Number two, it meets all the flag lot setbacks, which is 15 feet on all sides. The maximum height for accessories is 24 feet. It appears to meet that. Lot coverage is 35%. Also appears to meet that. All of those would be confirmed at the time of a building permit. And the site suitability complies with minimum lot size, minimum lot coverage, and required setbacks. Also, the proposed structure will be accessed from a driveway and there are no environmental concerns on the lot. For finding number four, it meets quality and functionality. It's adequate because they can meet the required parking spaces and they will not generate any more traffic than is already existing. The applicant doesn't plan to rent this. It'll just be used for personal use. No landscaping, no signage is proposed, and all utilities will be placed underground. Again, all public services are supplied already for finding number five. And finding six, it's not anticipated to have a negative effect because it will not increase traffic generation, no noise, no operational hours, and it would fit the character of the current neighborhood with design size and being utilized as an accessory dwelling to the existing residents. So the staff finds that you should adopt the findings of fact within the staff report, subject to seven conditions, including that no short-term rentals are permitted and it would be deed restricted, that it could not be rented unless somebody lived in the primary residence.
Thanks for the staff report.
Yeah.
We did advertise for a public hearing and will hold that hearing now. Are there any comments on this agenda item?
I'll save my snarky comment that I was going to make, but wouldn't it be nice if we weren't here right now? Why are we still doing this? You guys have never denied one of these. Steve, I'm going to see it at the planning board. Next time, this should be an administrative CUP. These ADUs, you guys should set guidelines for them. Let the staff approve these things. Why are we still here? We all want to be gone right now after that long hearing. There are bigger fish to fry than 80 years. Thanks.
Thanks, Nathan. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back to the council for a motion. Giuseppe?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve WCUP 21-28, the findings of fact in the staff report and the seven conditions of approval as recommended by the Whitefish Planning Board on January 20, 2022.
Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'd like to say that I fully concur with the public comment.
Frank? Microphone?
These, we, we as a council approved and directed staff that these should no longer come to us. They should no longer be requiring staff to provide us and the planning board with staff reports. You guys can do this on your own. Bring us the ordinance. We shouldn't be waiting for it anymore. Please do that.
Thank you, Frank. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed like sign and that motion does carry unanimously. If I could get a motion to postpone item 8C to the February 22 meeting, I do think we need to spend a little bit of time on our impact fee report, of which we do not have time this evening. I appreciate it. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Giuseppe. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous as well. Michelle, which brings us to item 7A, consideration of a request to annex four properties into the Whitefish Fire Service Area. Chief Page?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Whitefish Fire Service Area has received a petition from a number of property owners along Highway 93 South at KM Ranch Road to annex into their service area. These properties are already protected by us as part of the Flathead Fire Service Area. So for our response, nothing is changing. But in order for this to move forward, we need your approval since it is changing their boundaries. With our approval, the Fire Service Area has already approved it. It would then go to the county commissioners.
Thanks, Chief. Can I have a motion on this agenda item, please? Item 7A.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the request to annex four properties to the Whitefish Service Area.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Giuseppe. Further discussion? All those in...
I guess just one, one quick comment. If we look at the Montarize Developments letter and there, I mean, what we are going to be protecting there is 330 units, including the 68. So it's not like we're just getting a couple of houses here, so. It's no small deal. It's multifamily and 170 single-family lots, so. But they will pay and we'll get the money and, you know, but it's still time. It's more people out in the woods. It's more service calls. It's all of those things and so that's just my comment.
Rebecca?
I would just like to say, if the applicant's listening, it would be nice if we kept a treed border along the highway. Just to make it more aesthetically beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed like sign and that motion does carry unanimously. You do have Dana's report enclosed with the packet. Dana, anything else to report on?
I do have just a couple of things real quick. Joe and Bridger and I met with the organizers of Under the Big Sky. We are discussing with them the impacts that we saw last year and preparing for this next year. They are reducing their ticket sales by about 8,000 is what they're estimating. But that still means that there's going to be about 20,000 people in the valley for that weekend. So we are still working with them. They were really responsive to a lot of our concerns and requests and we anticipate meeting with them again in the future. Just so you're aware, we, we have had a couple retirements and some turnover in staff, but the building department, Linda, who's been with us for a while, has since retired. And so we're going to be a little short-staffed in the building department area. So we will work on rehiring that position very quickly. And then we also have Brian Woods, who almost made it to 20 years. He's like 19.9 years as a firefighter for the city. And he also is retiring. So we are working on hiring our next police chief. So the police commission has been notified to review our applicant. We advertised internally and have received one application. And so we will hold those interviews within the next couple of weeks to proceed with that hiring. And as with the finance director job, we've actually pushed that out further. So we are, we have a couple applicants that might be good candidates to interview, hopeful that we'll still get a few more by the deadline, which is Wednesday. So. The next meeting's on Tuesday. Don't forget it.
Thanks, Dana. Any questions for Dana on her report this evening? Not seeing any. We will move on to communications and why don't we start with Giuseppe this evening? Any comments tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just two comments. Number one, I wanted to say that I feel honored to be working along this beautiful group of people and the staff. And I want to say that I admire Steve's heart. I know we all are trying to do our job, staying in the rails, complying with our aughts, following the due process of law. And I believe, I've seen this, and I believe Steve is adding to that a layer that is his heart. And, and I just wanted to say, as a friend, almost, I feel sorry that you were left alone with your motion, with, with the vote. I felt it. And, and I also wanted to say, good job for putting that heart on the line. And the second item is, is more fun. I just wanted to congratulate the Whitefish Police Department in raising almost $2,000 for the Special Olympics. They had four professional-looking individual and scruffy guy jumping into the lake with them, and they did an amazing job. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Giuseppe. Steve?
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to say one thing about the sidewalk on East 2nd Street. For some reason, right in front of, just, just west of the bridge, there seems to be a place where dogs poop all the time in the middle of the sidewalk. And if you're out there walking your dogs, pick it up, please. It's pretty dang gross. And the other thing I just want to say is, I think it's clear by now, but I stand with the people, the service workers in this community. And I appreciate all of you. I appreciate everybody that came and commented, even the people who opposed me or opposed this project. But I, I hope we can come up with a solution and it needs to happen yesterday, like someone said. And it's, I mean, yeah, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Steve. Frank?
I'll also be brief, but I think I need to make a comment. I provided a number of the findings that I thought were appropriate for denial this evening. I don't want those, those were given as findings that I felt reflected the facts as we have been, have found them from public testimony as well as from staff and reviewing of our growth policy. It gave me no pleasure, I might add, to deny the project. But I felt compelled to do so based on that, among other things. We need, we need housing of all kinds, not just affordable housing in this town. And I think that's something we all need to grapple with. We need to evaluate these things based on our growth policy and that kind of stuff. But understand that, given our needs around here, we need housing of all levels. And we need rental housing, which is in great need right now. So anyway, I just wanted to make plain that it gave me no pleasure. But at the same time, I think that's where the facts and the law hold.
Thank you, Frank. Ben? Thanks, Ben. Rebecca? Thank you, Rebecca. Andy?
I actually have a little piece of business here. Steve and I, just because we're probably anticipating what a fun evening we were going to have. The LLAC Committee, Steve and I, of which are your trustee representatives to that committee met, we could go Monday, right? Yeah, we could go today. One of the things that we were discussing there and we're discussing is coming from Maria and the Parks Board also. And for the two trailheads, particularly the Reservoir Trailhead, it's the Whitefish Trail Management Plan for Haskell Basin. And it's the events, organized use and commercial use, essentially rules and regulations for that. As we discussed through that, we kind of all decided that you guys would entrust Steve and I to make a good decision on that and that we wouldn't have to bring that back to the council for approval. So it's not anything lengthy. It's a couple of pages and it tries to deal with commercial use essentially and organized use of those trailheads because the parking is very limited and the demand is very high. So hopefully we'll obviously bring that back and you guys will see it. But if you trust us to go, yeah, that's cool. Then I, if that's okay, is that okay? I will, I will email you the draft
Oh, okay.
of our first shot at it. How's that? And you can comment as you would like, rather than reading it all tonight. So, so that would be a good thing.
Do you mind including me on that?
What's that?
Would you mind including me?
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that. But, you know, I mean, it's by example, as we discussed. I mean, Glacier already dumped 75 kids out there at 4 o'clock, five days a week. And, you know, it's, it's a little crazy.
Yeah.
And that's parents and everything else. And, and just coming back, and I, I always hate to armchair quarterback decisions we made earlier in the evening, but I'll just address the housing thing a little bit. And, you know, Frank's right, we need housing of all types. But I think we do have to also come to grips with the fact and Mr. Page over there and Mr. Kelch will also tell you this, that every time we add any housing unit of any kind, it puts a huge strain on everything. We're just, we're getting to that point where just adding 500 units creates a whole host of other problems apart from the actual site. And I think, I mean, we know we're short-staffed in the police department. We're short-staffed in the fire department. We're short-staffed in the building department. We're short-staffed everywhere. And every time we just say, "Yeah, let's approve another unit," anywhere, that's impact on all of us in this community, particularly the 100 people that work out of this building that we're responsible for. So we have to think about that part of it, too. And I, you know, that's, and we're going to face a challenging budget year again this year. And whether it's Craig's guys out there trying to plow the road, I can't tell you how many texts I've gotten in the last two weeks with the way the roads are. So particularly central between 5th and 4th, which was pretty brutal when people parked their Sprinter van in front of the daycare and it was hugely rutted and people trying to go through there and it's like... So I mean, it's, it's, it's all of those things. It's not just finding a place for a dishwasher to live. I'm a dishwasher, so there you go. Anyway, I'm done.
Thanks, Andy. I met with Dana earlier this evening and the idea of a council retreat was discussed briefly. We can talk about it more at the next meeting, but I just wanted to get a pulse from the council on whether or not you'd be open to having an off-site retreat. It'll probably be one night, day, day and a half of meeting time, somewhere close proximity to Whitefish. Would folks be comfortable with that? We can certainly provide testing to make sure we're all safe, you know, to attend that meeting. That I do not know. Yeah. Does it need to be dog-friendly? I think the place we're considering actually is very dog-friendly, but we'll circle back with you on that. But showing of hands, are people generally in favor of, it's been quite a few years since we've had one. I think it's long overdue. So I'll work with Dana on some potential dates in mid to late April, if that's okay with everybody. April, if that's okay with everyone. Twenty-third of, okay. On that note, thanks, everyone. We are adjourned.